It's six o'clock. What's the date today, the 16th? I'd like to open a meeting, a council meeting, for Monday, April 16th. Would everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And may I ask Mr. Demler to lead us in the pledge?
I grew up learning the pre-1954, but... "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with justice for all."
At this point, I'm asking for roll call, please.
Councilmember Henley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Mayor Aggermonte?
Here.
Thank you.
And, oh, this is a surprise. We didn't have any closed sessions, so there's nothing to report out?
There is.
Oh, there is.
Yes, just briefly, there were a couple of closed sessions that have been held in the last few weeks, and we did not return to open session. So that was March 26th, March 27th, and April 9th, and in those, council gave direction, but there was no public announcement to be made.
Thank you so much. And at this point, I want, I'm looking at the agenda. Does, is there anyone who would like to make any changes to the agenda? None, I think.
Can I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Henley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Aggermonte?
Aye.
Thank you.
And at this point, do we have any meeting dedications? I have one for former, I don't, I'm sorry, former council member Kenneth, Ken or Kenneth McTaggart, passed away March 10th, and I just wanted to let you know that. And he is preceded in his death by his father, James, and his mother, Sabina Ni Sebastiani. He is survived by his wife Patricia's sons, Ian and Alec, daughter Erin, their spouses and partners, Linda Lay and Mike. I would just, as I said, I just wanted to dedicate this meeting to Mr. McTaggart. Thank you. We have, at this point, we have presentations.
Comments from the, out of order?
Out of order.
Oh, the general public comment.
Oh, pardon me so much.
No, I'm just bringing it to your attention.
Oh, thank you, thank you. So I, public comments at this point. Okay, let me read my little spiel. "At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less under state law, unless otherwise permitted. Under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the merits of the matter presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the city council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for council consideration. Upon being acknowledged by the mayor, please keep to the, step to the podium and speak into the microphone, begin by stating and spelling your name." Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Ken Brown, 1396 Lubec Street, here in Sonoma. I wanted to remind you that Arbor Day is coming, a week from this Friday, April 27th. Mayor Aggermonte has offered to give the welcome. We have a lot of great community partners. Supervisor Susan Goran will be the main speaker. Robert Demler will speak as well, and many other folks as well. It's a wonderful event, so we hope to see you there. We have a wonderful thanks to the Rotary Club. Dave Waldron will be the honoree this year, and he's well-deserved. You're gonna hear from the public tonight about, I'm gonna get this right, close proximity, micro, something or other alternatives. It's right near your house, Amy. These are not pleasant structures, and the city needs to stop them. I was a longtime friend of Ken McTaggart, served as mayor and council member and attorney here in town, a wonderful person. My wife Jewel and I rented, where the Letson Hotel is, used to be an apartment house, and we rented a room there. It was just lovely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Prior to my three minutes, I wanted to say, Madam Mayor, I meant no disrespect to you or to the deceased.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Absolutely, I understand that, no problem.
My name is Richard Silver, 95 Bernhardt Avenue in the Springs. Greetings and salutations. To amplify a little bit on Mr. Brown's comments, I'm here to formally request respectfully that the council initiate an ordinance for a moratorium for the maximum length of time while the council and city staff, planning department, planning commission can review thoroughly all the research necessary to make a determination on approving or not the installation of 5G, 4G cell tower equipment throughout the city of Sonoma. And I'm not sure clearly what the actual procedural next steps would be. I have been sending to all of you, and I hope it's not a blizzard of information, but hopefully to begin to allow you to find cogent resources related to this matter. I find it to be very, very important, probably the most important thing that we all can do for each other and for the citizens of the area and residents, because it's not just the city of Sonoma, it will spread out through the county. So respectfully, I ask, whatever the procedural next steps would be, I can send you more information in electronic form or print form, and we'll allow that to happen. Whoever, would it be Ms. Capiola to send me something on how I might do that? Or is this enough to initiate the public request? Anybody? I've got a minute twelve.
We can't answer until the end.
Oh, you can't answer until, okay, fine. All right, well, that's it. Thank you all, and I appreciate your listening. There's a gentleman here who I met with today who will further illuminate. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Paul McGavin, and what we're talking about is close proximity microwave radiation antennas. And it's very important to understand that these antennas, which provide wireless services, are very hazardous when they're close to where people sleep, heal, and live. You need to take them where they are today. They're out here by the ball fields, by the police station. People aren't sleeping out here. This is where they need to be, and they can actually, the wireless companies can use these existing facilities, co-locate on them, and be able to improve their service anywhere. The only reason they're trying to go into downtown or into the residential neighborhoods is for business goals. It has nothing to do with public utility or the need to make emergency calls. There is no significant gap in coverage. That will be proven with substantial information entered into the public record. Only with a significant gap in coverage proven do they have any rights to preempt your local authority regarding the placement, construction, and modification of wireless communication facilities. Very interestingly, and I pointed this out to many people in Sonoma, and I will follow up with emails to you, compare carefully the penultimate version of the Telecommunications Act, the fall of 1995. It's on our website. We have two websites, mystreetmychoice.com, links to scientistsforwirtech.com. On that second site, you will find all that text of the 1995 version and the 96 version. What's the difference? The wireless industry wanted preemption for placement, construction, modification, and operations of cellphone towers, and they did not get it. It was the congressional intent to leave the regulation of the operations of cellphone towers to the local communities. And this is what you have to look at, the power inputs and outputs of these so-called small cell cellphone towers. They might be physically smaller, they go out five miles. We have the data to prove it. You do not want to put these 15 to 50 feet from people's homes. You want them 200 feet in the air, far away from people, as they are right now. Not appropriate for residential zones, ever. Only in commercial industrial zones, far away from people. That's why a moratorium is important. It gives you the time to reflect all this learning in your updated city code, so you can protect yourself from the onslaught of applications that are coming your way from not just Verizon. You approve a few for Verizon, T-Mobile's coming right back, AT&amp;T's coming back. They want to put them everywhere. They want hundreds in your town, and they'll have the right if you let them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGavin.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. Robert Demler, D-E-M-L-E-R, 649 First Street West, Sonoma, registered voter, city of Sonoma. Last Thursday, I was the planning commission, and the proposal for the use permit for the cheese factory was approved, and there was a qualification as part of it. It was approved at the very last minute. If you looked at it on TV, which I hope some of you did, you saw I was a bit miffed at some of the things. But one of the items was that the city is going to charge the developer $84,000 in lieu of some needed parking spaces for a non-existent fund, but it was said at the planning commission that the city council has to approve it, so I'm, I don't think I can ask, I don't know if I could recommend, can I suggest that you all not approve it? I know it's not easy to turn down $84,000, but I think it's inherently unfair for one developer to have to give some money to a problem that's really citywide, certainly plaza-wide, over one developer, because all the neighbors are missing parking spaces too, the Swiss Hotel, the Sonoma Hotel, the Girl and the Fig, the Eldorado, and all the way around the plaza. I think, I've finally come to the conclusion that it's unfair for each developer to have to deal with our traffic and our parking problems. It's a city issue, definitely a city issue. I suggest that we end parking surveys, because whatever day, whether it's on a November day or on a Good Friday, like the Affordable Housing Project down Broadway, it's going to be criticized. So I suggest that the city, I think I can suggest, the city have an annual parking survey, a plaza parking survey, an annual survey, that is, each developer then if needs to use it, will pay a permit or something to help support it, but that's the survey. It's done by the city, and everybody who needs one during that period uses it, and then the next year could be a different time or whatever. We can't, we just can't depend on every developer having to do everything for the city. So that's what I would like to say about that. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Demler. Are there?
Good evening. Happy Tax Day Eve. Jack Wagner, 270 West Napa Street, Sonoma, California. I'm wearing my citizen's cap today, not my commissioner cap, but I do want to talk about the work plan or goals for the Community Service and Environment Commission for this next year. I think this would be the most efficient way of communicating that with all of you. I would like to see an approach toward a zero-waste policy, toward no plastics going in our landfills, and I think that this would require help from this commission, not only in policy, but in infrastructure and in education. If we were to, say, ban single-use plastics on the plaza for events, we would need to install more refilling stations on the plaza and educate people about that. We were educated at that meeting about the amount of waste that goes into our landfills because what we put in our recycling bins aren't cleaned, are contaminated with food waste and other waste. I've been really good at making sure everything I put in that bin now is completely clean. And I think there's a lot we can do for the environment as a city. We do have a TOT tax coming up, which you, this council put on the ballot for November, or is going to put on the ballot for November. If that is passed, I'd like to see some of that money go towards improving our public transit infrastructure. Out in Gattati, I've noticed they have these green bike paths where the traffic and bikes meet. I think that would help make biking through town a lot safer. I would like to see perhaps some electric vehicle recharging stations downtown, if we wanted to improve that type of, that use. There's a concept and a process called plasma gasification, which we're talking about landfills. This is a means in which plasma is used to break down anything less than nuclear waste into basic components. There's a few systems running around the world. This would be something that perhaps those that are on the Waste Management Agency and Sonoma Clean Power Board could start looking into. This would be a great thing where they could meet together. I do see Sonoma County and Sonoma at large having the ability to be both energy and waste independent. I don't think we need to be putting anything in our landfills. We could be taking stuff out of our landfills and producing energy with it, with that system. Again, there's probably a lot that you'd want to look into with that. And I got 12 seconds. So yeah, this would add to what my previous community member talked about, traffic, if we want to improve bikes and recharging and the like. So thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Anyone else would like to speak? Seeing no one approach the podium, I will close the session for comments. And now we're moving on to presentations. Where is that? I'm on presentations. Yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah.
So, of course, I have, would like now Barbara Lesko to come to the...
The front? I have a proclamation for you that I've read. This will be number three. And I didn't say that facetiously. I actually enjoyed each time I read this.
As did I.
I know, it was so wonderful, was it? "So congratulating Carolyn Barbolesco on 20 years of service to the Sebastiani Theater. Whereas for the past 20 years, Carolyn Barbolesco has worked tirelessly to further the fortunes of the Sebastiani Theater in Sonoma, which is a historic and architectural treasure. And whereas she has for years handled the advertising, press releases, the record-keeping, and done wonders for the movie lovers' club, and much, much more. More, which is really, when you think about it, four separate full-time jobs for very little money, but never mind. And whereas, even though she has a very demanding family of her own, she has nevertheless consistently placed the needs of the Sebastiani Theater first, and in the course of which time she has, with her broad smile and infectious laughter, somehow survived countless years of witchy poo shows. And whereas she began working at the theater because back then she honestly believed Roger Roten was a hugely talented magician who just needed a little help to put together a big magic show that would take him to the moon, and now 20 years later, she is still patiently waiting."
But alas, it is happening at the end of this month.
Oh, yay. And whereas, even though Roger Roten is the nominal head of the theater and the face that is known to all Sonomans as representing the Sebastiani Theater, Carolyn Barbolesco has worked quietly behind the scenes for years to ensure that Roger does not say or do anything that is too dumb, seeing her mission as that of lifting a great, if sometimes absent-minded man, man, to heights he could not otherwise achieve on his own. And whereas she has, through her prodigious efforts, made the Sebastiani Theater into a home that ceaselessly welcomes young people from many diverse countries and backgrounds, and in so doing, has helped create a centerpiece for the entire town, not unlike the Statue of Liberty. And whereas, even though she has been working with Roger for 20 years trying to keep the world's smallest two-person office out of chaos, she has vowed that she will keep working at the Sebastiani Theater until such time as either she dies and is carried out of the lobby with all due appropriate pomp, or her name is raised at the Academy Awards for special consideration, whichever comes first. And whereas, through her kindness, good humor, and relentless cheerfulness, she has made all that, she has made all that enter the Sebastiani Theater welcome, and has made attending events at the Sebastiani Theater a joy for all Sonomans and is one of the great unsung heroes. Therefore, I, Madeline Aggermonte, Mayor of the City of Sonoma, do hereby commend Carolyn Barbolesco for her exemplary service to the community, and congratulate her for everything she has ever done for the Sebastiani Theater, and I look forward to her next 20 years of service. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Sonoma to be affixed this day, the 16th day of April 2018. Congratulations. Thank you so much for all your service. You're welcome, Carol. Would you like to take a picture? Oh, there he is. There you are, Noel.
Would you like to say something, Carol? Well, I think it's just wonderful, and I'm so, I'm so humbly honored that you would do this for me, and just wanted to thank all of you for all of your support of the theater, because we are very grateful for what each of you has done to support us and to keep our doors open. So thank you so much for everything.
You're certainly welcome. This is the most fun I think anyone could ever have, doing this. I would also now like to, I have a proclamation endorsing the Community Resilience Challenge and declaring the months of April and May 2018 as Community Resilience Challenge Months. Do we have anyone here for that? No. Well, I'd like to read it. Endorsing, endorsing the Community Resilience Challenge and declaring the months of April and May as Community Resilience Challenge Month. Whereas, the city of Sonoma is concerned about the health and well-being of its residents and seeks to create a healthy, sustainable, and livable community. And whereas, in nine years of annual Community Resilience Challenge, in the nine, in the annual Community Resilience Challenge, over 5,000 people across Sonoma County have committed to complete nearly 31,000 actions to save water, grow food, conserve energy, reduce waste, and build community. And whereas, Daily Acts is a key partner providing programs and services that educate residents, students, businesses, and community leaders about sustainable practices. And whereas, the city of Sonoma can achieve its climate goals by growing and eating fresh local garden produce, greening its transportation, and creating energy and water-efficient homes, businesses, schools, and community, communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Sonoma commits to actively support the Community Resilience Challenge and its goal to inspire action to save water, grow food, conserve energy, reduce waste, and build community. And as a partner pledges to support the Community Resilience Challenge activities within the county, and use county communications, media, and programming to promote the cultivation of healthy food, waste reduction, and energy and water efficiency. And further may it be resolved that the city of Sonoma actively declares the months of April and May Community Resilience Challenge Month in the city of Sonoma as we work together for a healthier, more vibrant, and viable future. In witness whereof, I have unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sonoma to be affixed this 16th day of April 2018. Endorsing the Community Resilience Challenge and declaring the months of April and May as Community Resilience Challenge Months. Is Ruben Molina here? I have no one. Recognizing April 28 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, widespread Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has a profound and lasting impact on every community member of Sonoma County. And whereas, national research indicates that one in five women will be raped at some point in their lifetime, and nearly half of all women will experience some form of sexual violence. And whereas, one in 17 men will be raped at some point in their lifetime, and one in five men will experience some form of sexual violence. And whereas, every 98 seconds, a person is sexually abused, violated, exploited, or raped in America. And whereas, young people are at the greatest risk of sexual violence, and youth aged 12 to 17 are two and a half times more likely to be raped or sexually assaulted than their adult counterparts. And whereas, disabled people, people of color, LGBTQ people, homeless people, transgender people, undocumented people, and people of other marginalized identities are even more likely to be victimized by sexual violence. And whereas, over 18,000 members of the military and over 80,000 people who are incarcerated experience sexual violence every year. Whereas, with leadership dedication and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing sexual violence in the city of Sonoma through increased education, awareness, and community involvement. And whereas, the city of Sonoma strongly supports the efforts of Verity and encourages every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to end sexual violence, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors of all backgrounds connect with crucial counseling and other support services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Sonoma reaffirms its commitment to address the issues of rape and sexual violence by remembering victims, believing and supporting survivors, holding perpetu, their actions, and challenging societal myths and behaviors that perpetuate sexual violence in our community. And be it further resolved that along with the United States government, state of California, the city of Sonoma designates the month of April 2018 to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month. In witness thereof, I herein to my set, set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sonoma to be affixed this 16th day of April 28, recognizing April 2018 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless the members of the council, staff, or other public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Does anyone have any comments? None? I, yeah. I'd like to take it out to the public if you have any comments or have any requests.
I have a comment on one of the items, number 4.3.
All right.
Shall I now?
Yes. Yes, you can make your comments.
Okay. This is about Pueblo Day and I want to thank the city for supporting this event. I recommended it to the council in 2015 and I hoped it would grow each year and it has, so far mainly thanks to state parks. My hat's off to them. They've done a great job each year, starting in 2016. And this year, the Sonoma League and the Sonoma Valley Historical Society and the state parks are getting together for an event they call Pueblo Day Passport. And the city has supported that and I want to thank all of the above for doing so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Demmler.
Hi, I'm Yvonne Bowers, Y-V-O-N-N-E-B-O-W-E-R-S, and I live at 392 East Napa Street. I'm also the president of the Sonoma Pedluma Parks Association, or SPARKS as we're known. And to follow upon what Robert said, our three historical societies have gotten together as a collaborative effort. We call ourselves the History Roundup Team and we're looking to increase awareness of our historic organizations and also work together on membership fundraising and stuff like that. So, the perfect opportunity was Pueblo Day and we are creating this passport which is going to allow people for free to go to the Depot Park Museum, the Barracks, the Blowing Inn, the Maisonave House, and end up at the statue and get free ice cream if they've gone to all those places. Sweet Scoops is graciously giving us the ice cream. So, we wanted to say thank you very much for letting us have this opportunity to be in the plaza next to a statue of our beloved General Vallejo. And we hope this is a very successful event and we're going to do other things as a collaboration, but this is our kickoff and we hope to do it every year after. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Are there any other comments from the public? I bring it back to the council for the pleasure of the council or...
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar items 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, and 4.4.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Agramonte?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think I'll let the city clerk announce this.
Moving into public hearing 5.1, review, consideration, and possible action on the introduction and conducting a first reading of a draft ordinance amending the Development Code by establishing regulations concerning the personal cultivation of cannabis and making findings that the adoption of the ordinance is exempt under Secua Pursuit to Secua Guidelines Section 15061, among other provisions.
And I believe I'm either... We'll go straight to our planning director, Mr. Goodison.
Thank you, Mayor Agramonte, and members of the city council. The council is engaged now in a process of developing local regulations addressing medicinal and recreational cannabis activities. And to limit cannabis activities while these regulations are under development, the council has adopted moratoria. These moratoria address the personal cultivation of medicinal and recreational cannabis as well as commercial cannabis activities. Now, with respect to personal cannabis cultivation, at its meeting of December 4, 2017, on a vote of four to one, the council directed staff to prepare a regular ordinance that would embody the rules adopted by the city council through the moratoria. So, in these moratoria, there actually is an allowance for the personal cultivation of cannabis because that's required under Prop 64. That said, the regulations in place in the moratoria are fairly restrictive. The limitations are here on the slide. Cultivation is limited to indoor only, meaning either a residence or within a fully enclosed and secure structure. Personal cultivation is only allowed in conjunction with a residential use. There's a limit of six plants per resident. There are restrictions on the wattage of grow lights, the use of gas products, there are requirements for ventilation and filtration, and there are setback requirements in the event that a detached structure is used for cultivation. In addition, the written consent of the property owner is required. So, again, at the meeting of December 4, staff went to the city council to ask for your direction in terms of moving forward with an ordinance that would embody permanent regulations on the personal cultivation of cannabis. And at that time, while there were at least two council members interested in allowing some level of outdoor cultivation, ultimately, the vote was four to one to direct staff to develop and process an ordinance that, in essence, carried forward the limitations that are already in place in the moratoria that have been previously adopted. And so, that's what we did. We took that language. We worked with the city attorney's office to develop an ordinance. It was reviewed by the planning commission, first in a study session in January and second at a public hearing on March 8, 2018, at which time the planning commission voted unanimously to forward the draft ordinance to the city council with a recommendation for adoption. So, that's what's before you tonight. I would just like to draw your attention to a revision that was put at your place just this evening. We have, again, these moratoria that are in place and if you look at page four of this revised ordinance, we include a new section that repeals those sections of the moratoria because we don't want to have any confusion about what the law is in Sonoma. So, this would eliminate those provisions of the existing moratoria that address personal cannabis cultivation so that we only have one set of rules on the books. So, the recommendation tonight is to introduce this ordinance and with that, I would be happy to try to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council?
Do you know what the county rule is on personal outdoor cultivation? Off the top of your head?
Not off the top of my head, but I can look it up very quickly, so.
Okay.
Outdoor cultivation?
By the time we circle back around?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Does anyone else have a question? None? Then I will take it out to the public for any comments. I'll bring it back to the city council. Oops, sorry, Mr. Wagner. Quick with the gavel, this old hammer.
I was surprised no one was coming up to speak. Jack Wagner, Sonoma, California. I've been working on this issue for a long time. When I was 19, I submitted, drafted and submitted a measure to the Sonoma County that would have essentially allowed people to grow a small amount of cannabis for personal use. I was sued by the county or threatened with a lawsuit by the county for the cost of suing me. I settled out of court by withdrawing that measure. Since then, I've supported working within the system. I've collected signatures to get measures on the ballot. When I saw it passed and I saw Sonoma pass it overwhelmingly, I was hoping that we were moving forward on this issue. I don't support the moratorium on outdoor growing. The only legitimate concern I've heard is about smell and it wasn't more than a couple months ago when we had a number of community members come in here and complain about the smell of some trees in the park and this council basically told them that they were going to have to deal with it. And there's a lot of comparable issues. I don't really want to spend too much time on it, but people complain about a lot of things. I was a vegan for 10 years. I wouldn't want to see a bunch of community members come in and complain about barbecues and the smell of meat, manure smells, we use that. And so, I just wanted to express that. I'm a little low-energy because I try to sneak a little workout in before this meeting. Been trying to work on this guy. Yeah, I'd hope that you would take that into consideration and hopefully move forward on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Jewel Matheson, 1396 Lubbock, M-T-H-I-E-S-O-N. I too want to express my dismay and my sadness that we're not going to be able to cultivate outdoors, even minimally. Many cities are allowing that provision. I don't understand why it can't happen if we can't mitigate the smell, which in essence doing is making it impossible for low-income patients. They can't afford the lights, they can't afford the outdoor structure, so I'm really saddened for my low-income patients. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gil Latimer, Grant Court, Sonoma. I'd like to talk a little bit about why I think we should permit personal outdoor cultivation. As Jewel said, first of all, it's not affordable for low-income patients to purchase equipment for indoor cultivation, pay high electric bills, or to build a structure that may require city permits. We need to keep affordable options available for medical cannabis patients. Outdoor cultivation is environmentally friendly. It's green. Sun-grown medicine is the most natural, affordable, quality medicine for patients to produce for themselves. Compared to indoor-grown cannabis, sun-grown plants typically require less soil amendments, less fertilizers, less pesticides, and fungicides, making the outdoor method much more environmentally friendly. The City of Sonoma prides itself on being green, sustainable, and environmentally conscious. By forcing cannabis cultivation indoors, it does not meet these goals and increases our county's carbon footprint. Indoor cultivation is a safety risk. Considering what our county and city has been through in recent months, we feel fire safety should take precedence over other related issues that are relatively speaking of small consequence and can be easily mitigated. In-home cultivation can pose a bigger threat to public safety because lighting and ventilation systems can pose fire risks and other problems like flooding, mold, and other common byproducts of agricultural activity. According to press Democrat search results, there have been at least seven house fires associated with cannabis grows in the county in the last four years, two of which occurred in the greater Sonoma area. And I'll leave the rest of my stuff for next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latimer. Do we have any others?
Ken Brown, 1396 Lubbock Street. I'm at a loss as to something to add to the arguments you've already heard. Sonoma is a green city and people have been growing cannabis in the City of Sonoma since it began. And for the life of me, I just cannot understand how the council... Just I'm flabbergasted. I'm usually not flabbergasted by much, but this is just a completely wrong-headed approach. Growing your own cannabis is safe, inexpensive, and environmentally friendly. And that is something that you, as council members, should be supporting, not creating this fake news about the evils of outdoor cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Logan Harvey, 578 Esme Dara Drive. I think it's nice that there is a cultivation limit and some clear rules being set towards cannabis, but I do think that outdoor growth is something that should be allowed. I had a neighbor growing up that was growing about four or five plants in his backyard. It allowed him to get off opioids that he had been using for a back injury sustained for a long time ago. He grew them outdoors because it was more natural, he felt it was safer, it reduced the use of pesticides and things like that, that you'd have to unnatural fertilizer as well that he was having to use indoors. It reduced the cost for him. So, there's a lot of reasons to grow outdoor. I think it's something that should be supported by council. I think it's in tune with agricultural kind of feeling that we have around town and there's really no good reason to ban it other than smell, which is something that's going to occur anyway for cannabis users that are using in their own homes, which is perfectly legal. So, you're already going to have the smell and it's pretty minimal coming off a plant. We could never smell it two doors down, so. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this issue? Having no one rise to the podium, I'd like to turn it back to the council. And I think you were waiting for an answer.
So, with respect to the county regulations, in terms of area for outdoor grows, there's a limit of 100 square feet. For medical grows, there's no limit on the number of plants grown for medical use except for that per-square-foot area limitation, but for non-medical, it's limited to six plants. Plants can't be grown in front or side yard setbacks and can't be visible from public streets or sidewalks. And outdoor grows are not allowed in multifamily units or in certain higher-density zoning designations within the county.
Thank you, Mr. Goodison.
Sure. So, I would like to renew my request to the council to consider a small allowance of outdoor cultivation. I support a lot of the reasons that were raised. It's very accessible, far more environmentally friendly, which is something that we have been talking about a lot and we're going to be talking about a different aspect of that later today. And I just think it can be done in a way that minimizes the impacts that it has, you know, two plants close to the house. I've seen other cities and jurisdictions have, you know, fence requirements or some have, you know, like an annual permit so that if they do get into a situation where it's problematic, it's not permanent. But I just think there's a way that we could proceed where we could allow a plant to be grown naturally because I do think that the system that we're requiring for indoor use, which I understand why because you can't have a lot of problems growing inside, although on a sidebar, we don't have restrictions on any other kind of growing, you know, starting your seeds and stuff. So, it's just this one thing that we have this many restrictions on growing inside. But I think that it does need to be accessible and for people who are low-income, I don't think that they're going to be able to go through either setting up the system inside or installing a greenhouse in their backyard to be able to grow it. And I think that, you know, I'd like to start with two plants, which I think would have very minimal impact on the neighbors and we could structure it in a way that, you know, whether it's a permit or a license so that if we get down the road and we decide it's too problematic, then we can adjust. So, I'd like to ask my council to please consider that.
I also support outdoor growing for all the reasons Councilmember Hunley just stated, but in addition, I take our recent passage allowing adult use of marijuana partly as a statement that people are tired of the criminalization of behaviors that people are doing. People are using marijuana and people don't want it criminalized anymore. And so, right now, people are growing marijuana in their backyard and we have the choice to either acknowledge that that happens, yes, it does, or we have the choice to continue to somewhat criminalize it by saying it's not allowed. It is happening, people are going to have it, and whether we say six plants or two plants or no plants, the people that need to have it... need to have it for the purposes they use it for probably will continue to grow it. Many of the people that are interested in growing marijuana are probably already doing it, and I don't think whether we say six or none is going to change that. And I think that we should consider that, you know, with something modest like two plants outside, which is the easiest place to grow any plant. It's much more difficult to grow a plant inside, that that's reasonable and also fits in with the idea that voters would prefer to see decriminalization in general or reduce regulations of activities that people are already engaged in, so.
So I'm going to take a little bit different tack on this. A lot of times, we talk about how much water we use here and so on and so forth. And I don't think all 11,000 people in Sonoma are going to go out and immediately grow a plant or plants or what have you, but after seeing some of the things that I've seen over the years in my 25 years-plus here in Sonoma, of course, there's a lot of people that grow, and they've been very cautious about making sure that they're not affecting their neighbors, but we have situations where we have people growing 50, 70 plants in a place, and it destroys the livelihood of the person next door, where it creates a problem. We also have situations in town where there's neighbors pitted against neighbors and using legal actions and public record requests and so on and so forth. And I just think if we open this up, we're going to end up setting ourselves up for bigger problems down the road where somebody comes in and spends, whether they spend a half a million dollars on a home or $3 million on a home, and somebody's got a grow operation going next door, it's going to create a situation that will change the dynamics, as far as I'm concerned, of people trading real estate, which is what goes on here. It's, you know, it's one of our industries. And I just see that as a problem. You know, I don't have an issue of the way we've laid out the agenda previously, and a greenhouse, I don't think is a big deal, but there are greenhouses that are built in town that don't meet code. And we get back to code enforcement. How are we going to enforce the codes of, well, do you have two plants, or is that four plants, or is that eight plants? And is that hemp, or is that cannabis? And where code enforcement is going to be the expert. So I'm all for the way that the proposal is written, and that's what I'm going to support tonight. Thank you.
I also, too, will be endorsing the ordinance tonight. I do believe the density issues that we have here. I've done a lot of work on cannabis and the understanding of the proximity of somebody's backyard to somebody else's backyard, and I believe this ordinance. It's been well thought through, and we hopefully will be moving forward tonight. And as we know, cannabis, we are moving in a lot of different directions, and right now, I will be supporting this ordinance.
It's interesting. By coincidence, I've been going up to the Board of Supervisors meeting, as I'm sure former Mayor Hundley understands, to go up there for a vote for certain water issues. And one thing I did notice is probably with the few meetings that I've attended, there is a war going on between residents and neighbors because of the cultivation of this outdoors. So, you know, I walk up Fifth Street East, and I don't even know anything. I mean, I know what Modelo beer smells like, but I don't know that much about marijuana or cannabis. And I'm sure if I get to a point in my life when I'm ill, I will take advice from you, Jewel, about using this. But right now, I feel that it infringes on my rights as a person who's walking up Fifth Street East, and everybody, or not everybody, we have people who proudly come forward and basically say, yeah, I'm his client. I've been buying from him. And, you know, I don't even think it matters because I think people are going to do what they're going to do, and that's how we suffer from our freedom. Your freedom takes away from my freedom. That's how I see it. But I do agree with this ordinance right now. I think it's good for us. I think it's a good start. And, you know, we may find out, as others have suggested, there's a way to control certain things, so I'm open to that. And, you know, I always like people to prove me wrong. I'm willing to be wrong. So at this point, I'd like...
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion for an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sonoma mending Title 19 of the Sonoma Municipal Code by establishing definitions and standards for the personal cultivation of cannabis.
Second.
Mick?
So just to be clear, the motion is to introduce the ordinance. Thank you.
And may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hundley?
No.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries 3-2.
Thank you.
Ready? Moving on, we are at regular calendar, regular business 6.1, discussion, consideration, and possible... Possible action to adopt a resolution approving the 2018 citywide slurry seal as a project for fiscal year 2018-19 funded by Senate Bill 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, and authorize the Public Works Department to submit this project to California Transportation Commission.
Turning this over to our city manager.
Yes, so this will take us just a minute to get up. So, all right, Mayor Aggermonte and councilmembers, as we get this PowerPoint up, I'd like to introduce Colleen Ferguson, our Public Works Director, City Engineer, who will be providing an update about the 2018 citywide slurry seal project and also Senate Bill 1, which is the funding that will help us continue to make this investment in our streets.
I think we're all set. Thanks for your patience, Mayor Aggermonte and councilmembers. This item is about using some new funding to take good care of the city's streets. So this slide shows the agenda for what we'll go through on the presentation. So I'll provide an overview of this new SB 1 funding, what it means to Sonoma, and the staff proposal to put these funds to good use in our next fiscal year budget. So SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, was passed by the legislature and signed into law by the governor in April 2017. It's intended to address significant multimodal transportation funding shortfall statewide amid increases gasoline and diesel taxes and vehicle registration fees to address basic road maintenance and rehabilitation needs. In the past, gas taxes were not indexed for inflation, so SB 1 was really a catch-up. It increased gas taxes consistent with inflation costs since the last gas tax increase in 1994. SB 1 is expected to result in approximately $5 billion per year in new revenue statewide ongoing, and the revenue comes from increased gas and diesel taxes, fees based on the vehicle's value, fees on zero-emission vehicles, and it also includes Consumer Price Index adjustments to keep up with inflation. For Sonoma, funds from SB 1 will be more than 40% of the city's total gas tax revenue. So continuing with SB 1, it enables the city to address and to catch up on significant street maintenance, rehabilitation, and safety needs. The city expects to receive $2 million over 10 years. Overall, statewide, SB 1 will create or support over 680,000 jobs over 10 years, resulting in $33 billion in additional earnings over 10 years. And as you know, better roads generally mean safer roads, so we're looking forward to that. This shows where that SB 1 funding is going at the state level, all the different places that those funds are programmed to go, but you can see the biggest places that the funds will go is to state highways and to local roads. So for the city of Sonoma, this chart shows what a big impact the new SB 1 revenue has on the city's gas tax revenue. The fuel taxes were effective November 2017, so this fiscal year, we'll get some SB 1 revenue, and we'll get our full amount next year and then ongoing from there. The SB 1 requires that the city submit annually a list of planned projects to apply with these funds to and a list of expenditures using the funds to the California Transportation Commission, so that's the action that's before you tonight. The fiscal year 2018-19 project list is due by May 1st. We're proposing to use the SB 1 funds for the 2018 citywide slurry seal project. And you may recall that earlier, the council approved the 2017 street rehabilitation project for SB funds from the 2017-18. It was partial year funding. That project's been on winter suspension, and it's expected to resume construction at the end of the month. So here's a description of the 2018 citywide slurry seal project that's proposed for the SB 1 funds. It's part of the city's commitment to keeping the city's streets safe and functional. A slurry seal's surface treatment is a very cost-effective way to extend the life of pavement. Staff's working on the specific street segments to be included in the project, and we do expect to construct the project this fall. And just to remind you what a slurry seal looks like, here's a couple of photos from last year's slurry seal project. One of the streets I couldn't help but noticing was the story that was put on West Spain Street, just west of the plaza. You probably remember that one. So that concludes the presentation. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution approving the 2018 citywide slurry seal as the project for fiscal year 18-19 funded by SB 1 Road Repair and Accountability Act funds, and authorize me as the Public Works Director to submit this project to the California Transportation Commission, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ferguson. Are there any questions from the council?
I have two questions. One, so it's going to be about $200,000 a year extra now from it, if it's $2 million over 10, I think, math. Yeah. So how much street can we do for that much? Like, how much are we going, how many more streets are we going to pave because we have this?
That's...
Or slurry seal?
That's an excellent question, and it's more funding for the slurry seal than we put into the slurry seal last year. So we'll be able to do more than we did last year. We're working with our consulting civil engineer who has worked with the city for many years, identifying streets for the slurry. We just finished what we call the PTAP, the Evaluation of the Pavement Condition Index for all the roads and the bike paths, and so we're looking at that data to identify the streets that are the best ones for these slurry seal funds.
Do we have an updated score for our streets yet?
We do, and it went down one point, I think, from 67 to 66.
My other question, if you know, how do they divide it up? Is it based on population, or is it linked to existing gas tax revenue?
It's divided up the same way as the gas tax revenue is divided up now.
Okay. And is that, so what is that based on? Is it by our gas stations, or is it population?
I think it's based on road miles and population.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Cook?
I understand the slurry seal and how much that helps, but I guess one of my questions is, do we have any roads that we're going to do more than just slurry seal this year?
No, we don't expect to do a road rehabilitation project this year. We're going to finish up the one we started last year, and our expectation, depending on budget and all that, is to try to do a road rehab project every other year, when we have a larger area that we can work, and it's more cost-effective to do a larger area every other year than do a smaller area every year.
And then I guess my second question is, what do you think is the worst street in Sonoma, so I could drive down it, so I don't have to drive down them all, just so I could see what something that would look like that would be degraded enough that slurry seal would not work, that would have to be a replacement?
So I'd have to look at our report on our pavement condition. I'd be happy to do that and send out to the whole council so you have representative... So the streets generally fall into three categories, as you probably know. Ones that are in relatively good condition, that you can slurry seal and extend their life, but you're aware, you can tell already, that a lot of the community goes, why are you treating this street? It looks good. Why aren't you doing that other one over there that's almost gravel, right? But the slurry, if you put it on a street that's falling apart, it's like painting, you know, wood that's rotted. It doesn't make any sense to do that. But so there are streets that are in relatively good condition, and you can extend the life, and it is the most cost-effective thing you can do with pavement maintenance money is to slurry seal. And then there are streets that are eligible for kind of grinding overlay kind of rehab and that are in the middle category, not too bad, but not great either. And then there's ones that are just plain falling apart, and when roads get below the suitable-for-overlay category, what the pavement management program recommends is to not do anything with them until they're really, really, like, you can't drive on them anymore, and then tear them up.
Thank you.
Just maybe if I could add on one more thing. So as council knows, one of the things that we're going to be working on this year and will be working on the next couple of years is really putting together a five-year capital program. We've always had a one-year capital program. So part, I think that will be helpful as we start to look and see a little longer-term horizon and really can start to look at how we need to be setting aside money and some of those capital infrastructure needs.
Mr. Edwards?
So, Colleen, you talked about the bike path. So do we have an assessment on what life we have left on the bike path, and is it due for a slurry project?
We haven't delved into that data that much, but we did pay the consultant with city funds to also evaluate the condition of the pavement in our bike paths citywide. So there's the one main bike path that parallels Spain Street, and then there's other bike paths along creeks around town, and so those all got evaluated, and we're looking at those pavement conditions for a potential slurry seal as well.
Right. Thank you. And David, to answer your question, Fifth Street West is one of the roughest streets, I think. That would be my vote.
And I will send council, here's a couple in the bad category, a couple in the middle category, and a couple in the slurry seal category, so you can drive them and get a feel for it.
Vice Mayor?
This is a kind of a finance question. I know Kathy has said that we, in her review of the budget, that we have spent much more out of our general fund on streets in other cities. So is the idea that SB 1 funds are going to replace the general fund dollars we had been spending and free those up for other things that we need to do, or is it that we will do additional projects that we wouldn't have done already?
You know, honestly, I think that's part of a conversation that we're looking at a little internally as we put budget together and now know kind of the full amount. So, yeah, traditionally, we were, you know, we had redevelopment funds that used to help do some of the street work. We no longer have, and we have used, since redevelopment went away, more general fund to support overall street maintenance, because these are the projects that go to actually do the projects, but then we have, you know, I think a four-member maintenance team that's doing potholing and all of that, that's supported by the general fund. So some of those costs, we're going to continue to support by the general fund, but I do think part of what SB 1 lets us do is potentially maybe take a little of that burden off the general fund. So I'd have to really kind of, we need to dive into that a little more.
Thank you. David, do you have any questions? At this point, I'd like to turn it out. I'd like to ask the public for comments.
David Eiker, 1110 Loma Court. I have one question. Is this actual commitment to spend the funds on this, or is it only if the funds are available? I'm asking because it could be a ballot initiative to... I'm asking because it could be a ballot initiative to overturn the gas tax on the November ballot, so what happens if that passes?
Logan Harvey, 578 Estimadera Drive. I love that there's a conversation about potentially sealing the bike path again. It's gotten relatively rough. I'd love it if council would give direction to study what it would cost to expand it slightly and stripe it. Riding your bike down there, I primarily use bicycle for transportation. It's very difficult with, you know, walkers and people that have dogs that have very long leashes. It just kind of makes it less accessible for biking, and if there were stripes on it that said this is a designated cycling lane, that would make it a little bit easier, I think, and you wouldn't have to, you know, slow down and navigate. So I'd appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Are there any other questions or comments? Having none, I'd like to bring it back to the city council. Oh, you're two, there are two questions. I'm sorry. You're right. The SB1, I think, and then, yeah, and what Mr. Harvey brought up.
In response to the concern about a potential repeal on the November ballot, the input that I received recently at a League of California Cities Public Works Officers Institute Conference was the, what, the best thing for the city to do in that regard is put the money to good use. Many sitting in the bank is not very compelling to voters, many on the street is that's what the money is there for, and that's what, it's our responsibility to put that money into the pavement where it's supposed to go.
So are you saying we have access to the funding? Is that what I?
So we budget knowing, or, you know, with our expectation on, of the funding that we will get next fiscal year. So while we're not in the budget process yet, we do have to have our project list in by May 1st, which is why we're bringing this action to you tonight. But when we put the budget together for the CIP for 1819, we will have in there a projection of revenue from SB1.
But the issue is if, as Mr. Eiker suggested, what if it doesn't pass? Does that mean all that money disappears or it's somewhere that needs to be spent for that period?
Well, I think the question, so there's Prop 69, which we're going to be talking about next week, but they're trying to repeal it, so we won't know if it's repealed until the election. So then, it's like, what happens if suddenly we think we're going to have $200,000 and we don't?
Yeah, and I don't know that anyone has an answer to that question, at least one was not forthcoming at the conference, but it was clear that if the city has an interest in continuing this gas tax revenue for taking care of our pavements, the best thing we can do is put the revenue to good use. If we do nothing with it, more people are likely to pass to overturn.
So Colleen, what you're saying is that if, for some reason it gets repealed, then you write that into the contract. If it's repealed, then we get an escape clause in our contract, right?
That's not what I was planning at this point, because our intention is to put this slurry down before the election, because we would be doing it late summer, early fall. That's the best time to put down a slurry.
Oh, so I guess that's what the answer we were waiting for.
I meant mostly the future, because we were planning on doing this anyway, so out of our normal funds, so.
Thank you. And I think Mr. Harvey had a question regarding the bike. Yeah, wasn't it the striping?
Yeah, I think-
I'm interested in that.
Yeah, I think we heard his, I'm not sure we can answer whether that bike path can be expanded and striped right now. I mean, that's something that, you know, we would have to, you know, I think as we look at the bike paths and understand what the study is that we've gotten back, that can be a conversation we can look at.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the questions, though. So that means spend that money now, right, Ms. Ferguson? Get that stuff out there.
That's what's being recommended.
Beat up that slurry.
I think maybe just one other thing, maybe to help council feel comfortable. Again, what you're doing right now is we have to turn this in by May 1 with what our intention is. As we go through budget, you know, I think everyone's learning more and we'll see whether the initiative gets enough signatures. And it may be that, if, again, if it is in November, there's probably gas tax, half, almost half the gas tax would be collected, and it may be that we would have to cover 50% of the cost. But the improvement will, would have been made in our community.
So are we satisfied with our questions, our answers?
We can come back and talk a little more about that as during budget.
All right. Thank you.
And just, just to follow up on that, the city's been doing a slurry seal every year. We're just proposing to do a little bigger slurry seal this year with different funds. If we needed to fund it with local funds, something else wouldn't get done, but it's not a fatal flaw.
And I think Councilmember Hundley.
Well, I was going to make a motion.
Yep, that sounds good to me.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution of the city council of the City of Sonoma approving the 2018 citywide slurry seal as the project for fiscal year 2018-19 funded by Senate Bill 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, and authorize the Public Works Department to submit this project to the California Transportation Commission.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Aggermonte?
Aye.
Thank you. And with that, Mayor Hundley, we'll be moving to 6.2, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding potential changes to the special events policy.
Thank you.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Aggermonte, council, members of the community. So we're pleased tonight to bring you some updates to our special event policy. I think this is at least the second time the council has updated this policy. As you know, as a community, we have a fabulous plaza and Depot Park, and we have a number of special events that happen there. And so Lisa Jansen is the city's special event manager. Over the last about 18 months since the city hired her through a contract, Lisa has looked at some of the different ways and policies we have and has been kind of keeping a list of things to, to look at, how do we, where can we strengthen and where can we streamline and where can we enhance? In addition, I want to thank the Community Service Environment Commission who worked with Lisa for over a number of meetings to review and provide input on the special event policy. So with that, Lisa's going to provide an overview of some of the key changes that we're proposing to you tonight. And then whatever direction we get from council, we will be kind of finalizing the policy and it would come back then probably on consent with a resolution more formally. So with that, I'll turn to Lisa.
So good evening, Mayor Aggermonte and city council members. This evening, I'm here to present the proposed changes, as Kathy stated, to the special events policy for your consideration. I just quickly wanted to give you a quick background. So our current policy was established in 2015 prior to the city hiring a special events manager who was dedicated to working on the 40-plus events that happen on the city plaza annually. This, on this slide, you'll see that there's, it's broken down by the 2016 and 2017 numbers. Those numbers do not include our 21 Tuesday evening markets or the four nights of market jazz, and they don't include all the protests and rallies that are, that happen and are scheduled on the plaza every year. The overall purpose of the proposed changes to the special events policy is really to bring the policy up to date and consistent with our current practices and procedures that we are implementing, in implementing the approvals of the applications as we receive them. It's to reduce the redundant reviews and meetings as well as enhance sustainable environmental waste management and recycling practices. So the next slide is just to capture the process that led us to, led us down this path to, to these proposed changes. City staff has been noting and keeping track and compiling the list of changes over the past two years. It happened to coincide with the CSCC bringing forth an idea and a desire to implement a ban of single-use plastics in the November meeting. It was a discussion item. In December, there was a full report presented to the CSCC, including the recommendation for a creation of a subcommittee meeting to include our special events managers and from the nonprofits and the for-profit events that are organized there on city property and to gather their feedback on those proposed changes. That meeting was scheduled on December 21st. We had 11 event organizers attend the meeting, and we went through the majority of the proposed changes that are sitting forth in the red line document that we have provided to you. In January, there was a report back to the CSCC of the subcommittee's findings, and additional comments were made to the special events policies at that point. And, and back, and then in February, the CSCC was reconstituted, and in March, the city staff decided that we probably would be wise to bring the new reconstituted CSCC commissioners into the loop and provide them an opportunity to address the proposed policy changes and get their, and gather their feedback. So what you have in front of you as part of this packet is you have a supplemental staff report, and you also have a red line of the proposed changes to the special events document. I want to just note, I think it's important to note, that the red line document includes just those changes and not necessarily all the reorganization of the existing policy. If you were familiar with the existing special events policy, it started with the appeals process, which was kind of an interesting way to start, is we're going to start with the end. So what we did is we put it in a different, a little bit of a more intuitive order and then tried to also include some of the definitions so that you weren't having to, as you were reading through the special events policy, if you weren't clear with what the terminology was, you wouldn't have to flip to the back to get the definition, then flip back forward to get to, back to where you're reading in the policy. So the red line document that you have does not include the reorganization of the existing content. I'd like to start, I'd like to start with just a brief note. The items that I'm bringing forth as part of this presentation are the kind of the main items that had the most discussion. There are other changes to the special events policy, but they really didn't garner a lot of discussion from either the CSCC or the special subcommittee meeting with the event, special events organizers. So what city staff would like to do is formalize the process granting administrative review of large-scale events. In doing so, I'm going to actually move to the next slide. What you have in front of you is an organizational chart of how we review our events. Currently, the current process has kind of a three-step review process. It includes myself reading through the event, making sure that all the forms are accurate, all the supplemental documentation is, is provided with the application, at which point, for a large-scale event, there's a secondary review where we have the special events committee, which is comprised of our fire marshal, our street supervisor, our park supervisor, and a sergeant from our police department or our police of, police chief himself. During that review process, the event application is reviewed, we go over it, terms of, conditions of approval are discussed with the event organizer, and at that point, there's a decision being made. Can, can the event organizer implement those conditions that have been discussed or can they not? If they can, then the third review process, I would go ahead and schedule it for the CSCC, there's a staff report that's created, at which where the CSCC would review the, the application and either make an approval, adding additional conditions if necessary or just approving the application based with the current conditions of approval that the SEC put forward. So what city staff is trying to do is for those events that are reoccurring, large-scale events, and these are, namely, most of our events are produced by nonprofits, they're not changing yearly or annually, and the nonprofit organizers aren't changing annually. So what we're suggesting is for large-scale events with no issues in the past two years is to have it go through the typical special events manager review, then go to the SEC review, which again is the special events committee, and then a third review would be sitting down with the city manager and approving the application based on the conditions that were included from the SEC. We feel that this will streamline the process, eliminate some, some meetings, and free up some time for our commissioners to focus on other, other items. In addition to the changing, that one ruling on the event reviews, we have a post-event review process, which again allows the CSCC commissioners in its current format to approve, administrative approval of the post-event review. However, there's no process. It's pretty arbitrary. Either I have some event organizers, three of them, that have asked for this, but what I'd like to do is just formalize it so that we can get these events out of the funnel and get the process streamlined. But in doing so, one of the things I'd like to add is I'd like to start capturing more of the CSCC commissioners' feedback. If they're attending the events, I would like to receive their feedback within 10 days via email. This would be done independently, not a copy-all situation, but then I can use that information in their post, in the post-event review that I have with the event organizer and report back to the event organizer, the review. And then if there is no issues with the, from the CSCC and myself and city staff, those events in goods would then go into the good standing funnel and in next, the next, the following year wouldn't have to go back through the CSCC approval process. Moving forward. Another item that came up, has been brought up on numerous occasions, is, is the ability to add additional opportunities for children at our plaza and Depot Park events. Our current policy prohibits the use of inflatables, and what we'd like to do is soften the language a little. We're not allowing inflatable jumpies or slides, anything in which a kid can actually go inside or on, but what we're looking to do, excuse me, is see if we can come up with some inflatable ideas, and there's a couple examples in your staff report. But opportunities for us to encourage kids' activities at our special events in the plaza and depot park. Of course, you know, again, the request to have inflatables like this would have to be part of the application process, it'd be vetted by the SEC. There would be a whole approval process based on how you install and probably special event insurance, additional special event insurance requirements would need to be met. So currently, we do have some prohibitions. We're looking at adding a few others. The first one is prohibiting the use of motorized vehicles, the landscaping sidewalks and bike paths within, within city-owned parks. The second one is prohibiting the intentional release of helium balloons, and the third one is requiring all event organizers to adhere and educate their attendees on the relevant city ordinances that apply to the city-owned parks or property. That's the no dogs, no smoking, no vaping, no biking, no skateboards, no scooters. So really, asking our event organizers to help enforce and get the word out that, you know, if you're coming to a special event on the, on the plaza, you know, don't bring your dog because they're not allowed, and just being consistent in our messaging. The next item that came up is, is more of a clarification. For-profit organizations are required, per our existing policy, to make a, either a 10% of their gross revenue donation to a locally, local nonprofit, or 40% of the net revenue would need to be payable to a local nonprofit. What we're looking to do is put some guidelines around this. And so the new policy includes the guidelines clarifying that the donation policy should state that 50% of the donation can be payable for quid pro quo services or labor at the City of Sonoma's living wage rate, and the remaining 50% needs to be made as a donation, not to be tied to services rendered. The item that had the most amount of discussion over the last three months was really in and around environmental sustainability and solid waste and recycling. The city has made, I think, a very concerted effort over the last two years to ensure that all of our large-scale events have some sort of sorting program onsite for their waste disposal. And when I, when I use the word sorting, the majority of our large-scale events actually hire professional company to come in, go through all of the garbage cans and the recycle bins, dump them upside down, and sort through to ensure that the recyclables are truly recyclables and the waste is waste. We have, I don't have the actual percentage, but I think there's only one event to date, and we haven't actually gotten to that post, or the event review this year. and we haven't actually gotten to that post, or the event review this year. So I'm hoping that we can encourage them, our last remaining one, the holdout, to move towards this new policy. But it's, it says a lot that we're being very good stewards of our, of our public property. So with that said, one of the key objectives, now that we have this nice sorting program, is to really go towards the elimination of certain products and avoidance of certain products, products. And it's really an educational process. So a key objective of the revisions of the solid waste and recycling section in the special events policy is an implementation of a ban of all plastic beverage glasses and single-use plastic water bottles, taking effect on March 1st of 2019. This will allow us 11 months to really get out and, and make a concerted effort to make sure that we have the proper infrastructure to support a ban of plastic water bottles and beverage glasses. And in addition to that, we're also looking at banning the distribution and use of plastic drinking straws at events, and that coincides with, we already banned styrofoam. So that's one more item, no longer allowed, or we're looking for your approval to no longer allow on city-owned properties as it pertains to special events. There is additional language and guidelines in the, in the proposed policy that, to help event organizers move toward the span of plastic beverage glasses and single-use plastic water bottles. And, and we're encouraging best practices for events to reduce waste by avoid, reduce, reuse, recycle, and recover. The next item that was addressed was this, so most of our events are organized by nonprofits looking to raise revenues for their nonprofit causes. And one of the items that has come up on numerous occasions is this desire to want to promote themselves. And I kind of see it as a twofold. We also have, you know, community members, they're driving in, past the plaza and wanting to know what's going on in the plaza. So we, in the current policy, we do have an opportunity to put a sign on the wooden structure that is on the east side of the front horseshoe. It's kind of out of the way, it's not front and center, and to date, I have not had one event organizer take us up on this offer. However, I have had numerous requests to have an actual sign placed on the, the front historic lawn. So what we're proposing is to allow a sign to be placed on the historic front lawn, preferably probably farther to the left, or the west side of the front historic lawn, justified to the west, and really limiting the size. It needs to be three feet high, six feet wide. It can't be used for sponsoring information, so you couldn't say this event's sponsored by Coca-Cola, but you could say it's the event name, the URL, the date, and the time. It has, the information on the sign would have to pertain to the event that's happening that day. The thought is to have the event go up the day of the event and come down at the end of the event. So a very set amount of time.
Yeah, and so let me just add, to be clear, so this really, these are, these are recyclable banners, basically, that would be put up the day of the event and then come down when the event is over. So it would not be up beforehand, but would allow, you know, both the public to understand what the event is, and not tucked right in the middle of the horseshoe, but off to one
And so at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and they don't have to pertain to just the presentation I have provided, but any additional questions you might have on the proposed policy changes to the special events?
Well, I see my vice mayor, and then of course, Mr. Councilmember Cook.
I guess one of my biggest questions, it might be a legal question, would be if we had this, I know this is special events policy with the single-use plastic, but would we have to make that an ordinance that, that happens in the plaza? Because most of the events aren't taken over the whole plaza, there's taken over part of it. So if there was an event, I'd hate to see the event organizer be punished due to a member of public walking through. So would you, I mean, would the recommendation be to, if the council was going to move towards that step, to, to put it as an, as an ordinance?
That's not the intention at this point. The intention is, these are the regulations that the special event organizers need to follow, so if they are, you know, if they're selling beverages, you know, water, or, and so that, that they are not selling those single-use water bottles, clearly someone might be able to, you know, pick up a single-use water bottle at 7-Eleven a block away, walk through the plaza, and have one. But in terms of the events themselves, the thought is that they would not be selling. And so we wouldn't do it as an ordinance, and this would be passed as part of the special event policy that the event organizers would need to follow.
Good question, thank you. Vice Mayor?
I have a couple questions, so I'll go from the smallest one to the largest. Why does the banner have to say the date and the time if it's only up for the day of the event?
That's a really good question. Some of our events are two days.
Oh, okay.
So just making sure that there's wording in there to allow for those events that are two days long.
Okay. My second question is, of the discussion at the CSCC, have we been provided with the recommendations from the CSCC, or is this what the staff thinks is best?
So all of the changes, proposed changes to the special events policy has gone in front of the CSCC on three occasions. This last time, it was voted to propose this to the city council.
So what we have in front of us is what the CSCC recommends?
At the state, yes.
Oh, okay. And then my last question, can you go back to the slide about the revised procedure for approving events where the third step is the city manager?
There you go.
I guess I'm uncomfortable with this change for a couple reasons. Number one, I think that it's unique and also wonderful that we have a body of citizens that has the final say over what can be held at the plaza, and that if there's dispute about what can be held at the plaza, the people who decide that at the end of the day are elected officials. I think that, that's our jewel of our town, and so I don't really support that. And I also think that in terms of the city manager's workload, adding additional things to the city manager's workload, given all the other things we're trying to accomplish, is a bad idea. So I don't support that change, I think. I don't know. Do you have any additional thoughts about those items?
So Amy, it's only for those events that are in good standing. So we're not looking at new events coming in. All events would continue to go down the, the top process until they hit that good standing, meaning they've made it two years without any issues.
But don't you remember that there's events that are, they're in good standing, and then, like, I'm just thinking of like, the Film Festival, and then they aren't. Then what?
Then we bring them back to the CSCC. So the, that post-event review would then come back to the CSCC, at which point we'd start addressing those, those issues a year in advance.
So why is the city manager, I mean, the city manager is wonderful and talented and intelligent, but why are we giving the city manager extra new work?
I think the way Lisa has put this was wanting to make sure that as, that there was, you know, one additional oversight. I mean, clearly, I will tell you that when, when she and I review and talk about different events, she briefs me on when an event is completed, what she's heard. So I actually would be leaning on kind of the information that she's gathered and put together. So I don't think it's necessarily a huge amount of work. And again, I think it's, there's two things, though, that as Lisa and I talked about this process, and I think that was talked about with the CSCC. One is that, so let's talk maybe, let's, let's say, for example, the Vintage Festival, since folks are here in the room. Vintage Festival is really kind of, it's been a very similar event year to year to year, and we've not had any issues with that event. Now, let's say next year, so we don't have any issues, so it doesn't have to go back through the full CSCC process, but also, let's say next year, they want to do something completely different, they want to add a new element. If they're doing something that is new and different of a substantial kind of size, that it's, then it's going to go to the CSCC for review. So I think what, in my understanding, that, because we weren't sure what the CSCC would think about this kind of process either, and Lisa, I'll let you speak because you were there, but, you know, part of this really was trying to be respectful of the commission's time because they are, there's other things that, where they want to spend their time other than reviewing some of the events that have been in good standing, aren't being changed, there's been no complaints. And so this was really kind of trying to be respectful, both those pieces. But Lisa, do you want to speak at all about the commission's talk?
I can speak to the commission's talk, or also speak to the event organizers. You know, it's, it's asking them to come to one more meeting, because they are required to come to the SEC meeting, at which point we discuss the conditions of the application at that meeting. So it's just asking for one more review and looking at a way to just streamline the process.
I'm sorry, last question. So when, after, let's say you have, so, since I was on the CSCC, after the event, we would always review their budget and go through and look at, how much did they donate to charity, and what did they spend money on? So who will do that for these events?
Well, I think it's important to note that most of the events that we have, all but one are, unless it's a private event, all but one are nonprofits. So most of that money is going back to the nonprofit that's organizing the event. So really, it's the one event that we really need to manage and make sure that those donations are taking place.
And who's going to do that? Because I know at the end of the event review, we would, and Fred, you know, tried to make the template so we could have an apples-to-apples comparison of what was happening, so is that not going to be done now?
No, I, moving forward, we're actually in the policy requiring that template to be, we've added language about the template, and the expectation is for the template to continue to get filled out and completed.
And then reviewed.
I initially review it at my post-event meeting with the organizer, and then if it goes to the CSCC, then they review it again. So it gets reviewed twice, and it's included in the staff report that I put together for the CSCC.
But I think of the new policy would be reviewed by the special event manager and
A few questions. Does this policy apply to the Tuesday Farmers Market, or is that a separate deal?
It does.
It does?
Yes, it does.
Okay. All right, so, so this determination of what is good standing, is it the special event manager's discretion as to whether they are in good standing?
Well, I think at this point, I think it would take an offense, an offensive, so at this point, good standing, most of our events are leaving the plaza in a clean and tidy manner, very low impact, I mean, the impact to the grass is the impact to the grass, and all events are bringing it. But I'm looking for events that are really like, driving a trailer into the middle of the plaza to park it, and doing donuts on the lawn, that was offensive, like, hence why we have the prohibition. Releasing helium balloons as part of an event, again, you know, we're taking those more offensive items, and those would be the ones that would be kicked back down to, you know, not in good standing.
And so as far as whether a CSCC commissioner has feedback in determining whether that is included in the post-event review, is there discretion there? Or is all feedback automatically included in the post-event review?
I typically include all feedback in the post-event reviews. Any feedback that I've gathered.
And so then that might answer this, is there a mechanism for if city council members receive complaints about an event, that that would be included? And what's the timeline between, like, the window that people have to lodge complaints about events, for it to be considered?
Well, at this point, I'm asking for 10 days, and I would love to get the feedback from the city council members. If you hear something, if you see something, please feel free to email me, and the sooner the better. I'd much rather address it immediately with a special event manager than wait until the post-event review that happens sometimes anywhere from, you know, 30 to 90 days post-event. So.
Is the post-in-review, is there a report, like a, like a printed document that's?
So there's two, actually. We have the post-event review that I do, which are my observations, and what I would like to do moving forward, and what's being proposed, is include the CSCC's comments, as well as city council, as well as, I actually have included community members' comments in my post-event review. If I get phone rings and I pick up that, you know, there's trash out on Levalle or somewhere, it's included in the post-event review for a run. So at this point, what I'd like to do is, that's one review, and then for the CSCC meetings, there's another staff report that's included, at which point the, I also highlight those same issues that have arise, and then the post-event report that I've made within a couple days of the event is attached to that as a secondary document.
So if a, if a report, so during the first review, if you determine that they did a decent enough job not to make them go back to the CSCC, does anybody see that besides the event coordinator?
That typically gets sent off to the park supervisor, streets supervisor, police chief, if there's an issue, but if it's a clean report, it typically just goes to the park supervisor.
So I'm just thinking, maybe, for all the things that are kind of just keep cycling, if there was like, I don't know, quarterly report to the CSCC of just keeping track and make sure that the report is consistent with what they're thinking. So my next question is, with regard to the move towards banning single-use plastics, was there a conversation about compostable containers and whether they're compostable, or wanting to draw a line on what is compostable?
Yes, there's been a lot of discussion on that. It's been a hot topic at the CSCC for quite a few months now, but last, the April meeting of the CSCC, we actually had someone, and I don't know the title, is it Sonoma, or Sonoma County Waste Management, Kathy?
Yeah.
That came in?
Waste Management Agency.
She came in and presented, and the facts that I found very shocking, there's two of them. One, I knew about, the compostable plastics are really not compostable, we just don't have the facilities here in Sonoma County. The second item, which was a real head-scratcher for me, was if the plastics aren't clean, then they can't be recycled. And currently, we don't really have a facility onsite at the plaza that allows us to clean all the plastics that are being put in the recycling bins, so that needs to, we need to figure out a solution to that.
And so then would this ban on plastic include a ban on plastic compostables, or?
Yes.
So it's all just plastic? All right. Let's see. I think that's all my questions, thank you.
Are we just questions? My question is on this, on the inflatables, how do we, if you could put that picture back up, I'd appreciate it.
There you go.
So how do you keep kids from walking on all of those attractive?
Climbing on them.
Climbing opportunities.
So during the SEC review, there would need to be discussion around patrolling and supervision, additional crowd monitors, et cetera, and requirements put in the application as far as a condition of approval. If you want to do this, then you are required to do X, Y, Z.
And in looking at the size of it, where, where on the plaza do you think that would fit? And considering all the tree roots and falling elm trees and everything?
Again, these are just examples. All of that would still need to be worked out, and it would all have to come under the discretion of the SEC, meaning the park supervisor, to help really figure out solutions on how to, because it's, it's a matter of also making sure that they, we can secure them. So it's not just the height of them, it's how we secure them. And so working with the, the parks supervisor, we would do so.
And it would seem that you would probably need a portable generator to run them, or?
Electricity.
Electricity.
All of the above.
Okay. And we have those receptacles in the places that?
We would have to ensure that wherever these get placed, we would have to vet all of that in advance. The thought is, we'd wait until an event organizer wants to propose something, and then we'd kind of tackle it, and then once we tackle it, it would go down with the requirements, and maybe if another event organizer wanted to use it, then we're not having to recreate the wheel each, each and every time.
Okay. And then the last question is, has there been any consideration by anyone in staff on our lovely dumpster that we have behind City Hall? And it's been pretty ugly for at least 25 years that I can remember, about making, turning that into a actual recyclable sorting station and... making, turning that into a actual recyclable sorting station and improving that and spending a little money to make that work where it becomes, since we have so many events on the plaza and around the plaza, that we do something like that.
So that is one of the projects that we're looking at, that we need to figure out how to phase into the CIP, but it makes sense to us as staff to potentially, one, do a, some kind of a nicer, what do you call it, material to designate that area. Um, and, you know, some kind of water access might be necessary to really do what we need to do. Uh, so there's definitely some improvements that need to be made. I think that's one of the things that we've talked, um, one-on-one about, really some reinvestment in the plaza. And that's one of the areas that needs some reinvestment.
Um, was there any discussion about banning other plastics like forks and knives? And, um, I also wanted to know, do people mostly use paper plates? Are there any plastic plates? Why is it only, um, bottles? I mean, I know why bottles are problematic, but.
So, uh, the, the answer to this question is there was a discussion of banning all single-use plastics. And that's where we started. Um, through a series of discussions, it became, um, clear that we needed to come up with some solutions before we go full force into a complete ban and making sure that there's options, viable options, um, that are cost-effective and will actually allow us to, to implement on such a ban. And so what we'd really like to do over the next 11 months is figure out, let's solve the single-use plastic water bottles and wine glasses. Um, and in the interim, also start looking at, you know, there's a lot of fiber utensils you can use now, um, and, and starting to get our event organizers moving in that direction. If you look at some of the additional language that was added to the recycling, um, and waste management section, there is language in there, like, these are the things you need to, you should be thinking about. Can we, Red and White Ball just went out and purchased stainless steel flatware? And so their goal is to now utilize this stainless steel flatware for all their red and white balls moving forward. They're going to collect it, wash it, package it back up and wait for next year and reuse it. So I think, you know, the event organizers are looking for solutions as well. They've, they are on board with these, with these, um, items. It's just wanting to make sure that we can do it in a very effective manner and not burdening them with, here's the new rule and you figure out how to implement it.
So Lisa, have you had any discussions with Bright Rentals and some of those folks and some of the massive events they do and some of the larger caterers that have, have crossed this threshold already with?
So, you know, we, it's interesting because what, I, I think that the caterers and the event rental companies, that's kind of the easier solution. That's an easier fix because you can, in your contract, you can negotiate and say, I want to use, you know, stainless steel or I want to go to the bamboo and I want to move away from plates. I want to use, you know, past orders with a catering company. Where we start to get into kind of the, the stickiness of the subject is with those food vendors that are, you know, they're onsite for festivals. So we have multiple food vendors that are providing a service. I think that's where you start getting into, those vendor contracts need to start, as an event organizer, you need to start looking at implementing some in your contracts that, you know, they can't use plastic, um, glasses, et cetera.
And one other follow-up question, and do you have a list of vendors that, um, provide those kinds of things, like some of the supply companies and so on that? I think Mary Dealey in town, um, she, her company sells, I don't remember the name of her company, but they sell all of that stuff and, because there's the whole trend going on with it. And they're selling stainless steel straws, the Red Grape is using paper straws now. And, I mean, a lot of the restaurants and so on are just doing that anyway because it's the hip thing to do. Uh, but the stainless steel straws that we got the other night at the council meeting, those were great. My kids are using them already and they love them.
I think as a community, we're embracing it. It's just a matter of now, um, implementing it on a broader spectrum. Um, and the answer is no, I don't have a list per se. Um, I always feel weird making a lot of straw, you know, recommendations, but I can definitely put a list together.
But if the, some of these vendors don't know where to go, it'd be great to have that.
At which point then I, if asked, I usually will, you know, uh, list off those that I've worked with in the past or I've seen come across on other vendor, um, list that other events have used.
Great, thank you.
So, thank you so much. Uh, first of all, I wanted to compliment you on the flow chart. That's what I'm used to looking at, the flow chart. I don't know if that's passe, I have no idea. But when you, Patrick Carter from the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency, I'm sure you went oivey, right? Because it's, there's a lot that we're doing wrong. Um, and it's a total cha, it's a challenge. It's at different levels, you know, with the events that we have, just home, what, you know, waste, we're just, uh, whatever. But, you know, I think some of the good stuff is, I like the idea that there's time to do this. I think there are some things that can be done now. There is a funder that would like to fund, take care of the bottles, reusable bottles. And then I thought, well, we'll have water stations all over the place, but we always, we don't always have over 4,000 people around. So it has, there has to be some way to actually evaluate what we need. The other thing is I know our own hauler here is very interested in actually identifying the things that you're, you're, you're speaking of. And I know that area behind City Hall with that, the dumpster is actually where they sort everything after big events. So, you know, while everybody's pick, rolling up their blankets and stuff, there, they just put that stuff all out on the ground and sort and try to sort as best as they can. And so, um, I think there's really a process, maybe this council could actually see the sorting facility. They have one in Napa, I think is Recology or here in Recology. But, but I know our hauler really wants to help us with that. And of course, now their latest announcement that the stores do not, they don't have to do the recycling any longer, even though they didn't. They owe us like a hundred dollars a day for not doing it. Um, so all those issues, um, are what are out there facing some, this city, the city of Sonoma. So I understand the, um, you know, the, the ambition of doing this right away, but I really don't believe it can be. I think it could be done in segments, maybe by the time we hit some of our bigger, bigger events, we can actually have, I've tried to remember the name of the big container they use at Starbucks and, but the big water containers with, as you described, Kathy, that can be used. But those things cost people and that means they have to incur a cost to work on the policy that we've developed. Those are things, there's so many moving parts. I believe in what we're doing and I appreciate CSCC making this an issue and, um, because I think it's something that's really important, but I still think we have a ways to go. But it looks like we're going to have, you know, we may, maybe even each council member could do an informational, uh, video. It seems to be a great way to meet people and this is what you do with a plastic dish. You don't just dump it with the salad oil on it. Just those things would be kind of fun to do. Or Gary Edwards, your children could do it. Even your, you know, we could just do something like that. It would be great for people to see because I think the education of this process is so important. And so the city of Sonoma is really ahead of everybody else in this county because of, you know, the climate action 2020 and other cities are trying to keep pace with us. So, um, I think there are a lot of good things we've done and, um, but I think there's more that we can do. So I appreciate the CSCC, um, actually getting on to this issue. And I can see by our council that we, um, also agree with that. So at this point, I think we're going on to the public.
Madam Mayor, before this item is opened up to the public, just as a procedural matter, staff is looking to get direction from the council tonight and would be bringing back a resolution to amend the policy at a future meeting.
Oh, all right. Thank you for reminder. So, let's see. I have to look, turn back on my laptop. So there is your, a resolution?
Yes, Madam Mayor, would need to be opened up to the public at this point.
And that's what I thought I was going to do. All right, thank you so much. So at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public for a comment, comments.
Maria Toymil, I'm the president of the Valley of the Moon Vintage Festival. I would like to say that I did attend that meeting that Lisa had of the event coordinators and it was a great meeting. She get, she allowed us to, you know, give a lot of information that would work for us and maybe not work for us. The redundant meetings that we have with the CSCC, both before and after the event, I think would be a great thing to, to dispense with. Um, it just, I, I went to a post-meeting where other events were being post-advised. And even though we were all kind of dealing with the same types of things, the CSCC addressed one thing with one, one event, addressed something different with me, although I was doing the same thing that that event was doing, and then maybe addressed something different with the other event, although they were still doing the same thing I was doing. So it's, it's almost like all three of those things should have been addressed to all three of the events when they just kind of pick and choose. So it's a little, it's not consistent, I, I would say. The other thing that I'd like to talk about is the single-use plastic. The 40-plus events that happened on the plaza, what I suggested at our meeting was that the city come up with a solution instead of 40 organizations coming up with 40 solutions. It would streamline the process. And, um, I'd also like to say that if we are going to go to a single-use plastic, we would need cold water dispensers and a lot of them on the plaza. Because on 105-degree day, when you're in the vintage festival at 1:00 PM in the afternoon, the last thing you want to drink is warm water. Okay? And yes, the dispenser's there, but you know, go out on a hot day and drink out of your hose, see how, how that kind of feels, because it doesn't feel very good. You would want some cold, cold water. The other thing is, um, you, you're banning, you want to ban plastic containers or, you know, beer, beer cups. We use beer in plastic. So what are we going to drink beer out of? I mean, a paper cup isn't super feasible because of the liquid sitting in there for a long time. It's going to become schlishly and schlushy and end up everywhere. So we would, we would need to find a solution for these things before we implement them, I think. I think we have, we have to come up with some, some solutions. My, um, one last question is when you've mentioned motorized vehicles on the plaza, would that include golf carts?
So what we're asking is, um, we'd like to know upon the submission of the application that that's something you want to use. And then there would be, um, during the SCC discussion, there would be conditions placed on it. Um, and then that would follow your application through the approval process.
Okay.
But we want to know in advance. We don't want to get into a situation where we show up and?
You have 10 golf carts and they're swimming around.
It's a surprise, right.
Right, right, totally understand.
But they have to have the right turf tires and are operated, there, there could also be fire marshal rules in and around that as well, so.
Exactly. Okay, I understand. So I'm just saying, I think we really need to look at the, the, uh, single-use plastic very seriously and not implement something that, or not require us to do something that's really not available for us to do.
Thank you. And I apologize, I let this go too late. I went on a food run, so I apologize for that. Do we have any, anyone else who would?
Just, can we just wait to like our normal practice and answer the questions at the end of public comment instead of having a dialogue with people at public comment?
I was looking forward to a dialogue, yeah. Robert Demmler, First Street West, thank you. Um, Councilmember Edwards brought up an issue that I had planned to try to cover in my questions. I think I understand that non-pro, any profits from an event that's held by a nonprofit goes back to that nonprofit. But profits from an event held by a for-profit, some of it goes to, uh, a, a nonprofit, a donation to a nonprofit. My question is, are they restricted to Sonoma, city of Sonoma nonprofits or can it be just any nonprofit? Uh, and I'd like to know. And also, and you said it was only one, bit academic in questioning. And my other question was, couldn't some of those funds from the profits from for-profit events be directed to improvement of the plaza, including doing something about the, uh, the trash enclosure? I think that's it. Don't answer me now, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demmler. Are there any other comments from?
Hi there, Mark Flacco, 1225 Stevens Gate. Um, I want to voice my support for the plastic ban. The other parts of this really don't affect me, but, um, single-use plastics are a pretty big issue worldwide for our oceans, for, uh, for our health, for our soils here in Sonoma Valley. I've written a few comments down, I'll be happy to read. But first, I wanted to point out, some, uh, I think the, it says reusable wine glasses or, uh, I'm sorry, single-use wine glasses are prohibited, but it doesn't say beverage glasses. You seemed to say that it was beverage glasses overall, so maybe, maybe that is the case. But I think, I think the danger with saying just wine glasses is that we'll move to just those little kind of beer glasses or whatever else. Um, so in general, I'm supportive of changes that limit our waste stream, reduce the amount of plastics demand, and I'm supportive of any movement to ban single-use plastics. Bans in general aren't loved because they seem heavy-handed, um, but there's really not a good market solution to getting rid of single-use plastics. They're cheap, um, they're ubiquitous, they're convenient, uh, they're, uh, really, really, they're artificially cheap because they don't embody the costs, the true lifetime costs. They don't, they don't cover cleanup in the oceans, uh, they don't cover, again, cleanups in, in our soils. We have lots of microplastics in our soils because these compost facilities, small plastics get into them, they compost those, they break down into tiny, tiny little plastics and they get spread over our vineyards and all throughout our valley. The EPA estimates five ounces of CO2 as emitted for each ounce of PET, which is the material used in water bottles. Um, so more CO2 than plastic and that plastic is used for a brief moment for you to drink water and then let it disappear for a thousand years out of your sight. Um, we, uh, we also have healthcare costs that will be absorbed by society for ingesting microplastics. Uh, most of the fish you buy at the store have microplastics in them. Um, so as we ingest this stuff, there's going to be some sort of health cost associated that the society's going to have to bear. Those are not reflected in the price of our cheap sushi containers and our, and our water bottles. Um, so in general, I don't believe the market, we can't have a market solution. I would love a market solution, but I don't think there is a market solution because externalities associated with plastics are far and wide and we're not paying for them right now. They're, they're polluting our oceans and we're not cleaning them up anyway. There was one other thing that wasn't mentioned in that presentation, which is that there's a, uh, solid waste recycling plan that's required for each of these, uh, events and I support that strongly. I think that's a really, really great start. I'm about to run out of time here. But I commend you guys for listening and taking it seriously. Thanks.
Logan Harvey, 578 Estimadera Drive. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Sonoma Valley Democrats of Environmental Committee, which I'm chair of and also the Sonoma Climate Coalition. I'd like to point out that the meeting started with a declaration, which I appreciated, that it's Community Resilience Challenge Month, which one of the tenants of that was to reduce waste as a goal, and I think you have a great opportunity to do that tonight. Uh, I was at the meeting for CSCC and the most kind of shocking thing to me is that 350,000 tons of waste go into landfill from Sonoma County each year. Um, and that's increased because China's no longer accepting dirty recyclables, so any food products on plastics and things like that get turned around. So now in the United States, because we're not handling our own recycling, that just goes straight to landfill. And if you're looking at a plaza event, uh, any plastics that are used, they're going to have food waste on them, that's why they're producing it, and that's going to go straight to landfill. So plaza events could last for a day or two or they could last for thousands of years with the plastics that sit in landfill, uh, from them. I'd rather they last a shorter amount of time. Because there's no one there to wash food, uh, wash food off of these plastics, I think it's a really, really good idea that, that council directs staff to research, um, costs and comparisons between single-use plastics and compostables, especially for forks and all the rest of it. Um, because it would also, it would, one, it could all go into compost, which would be a great thing. Um, and two, it would reduce confusion. I think a lot of times people approach the four different bins. I went to a, a movie theater in Berkeley, there were like 27 bins and I felt very confused about where the straw went and where everything went. If everything's compostable, you just throw it in the compost. And if it has food waste on it, that's fine because it's going in the compost and it's going to be composted. So I think you're going to reduce the amount of confusion on the, on the part of events goers, make things easier for everybody and, uh, improve compost. I think you need to partner with Sonoma Waste Management. Sonoma Waste Management to give direction on what counts as compost, because we have organic compost here that we want to be able to use in organic farms, and that's why plastics aren't allowed, those, those compostable plastics aren't allowed. I think there's a, a lot of opportunities. I mean, yeah, the, the idea of beer was brought up, but there's glass that could be used, you could sell cans of beer, there's lots of different other opportunities. And as far as water bottle refilling stations, I'd love to see more built on the plaza in a permanent sense. A lot is kind of brought up about the fact that the kids put sand in the one that's by the, well, you don't have to build it by the playground, you could build it in other locations. The kids probably aren't going to cart the sand across the plaza to fill it. And there's also a lot of opportunities that I saw online today when I was doing a little bit of research for portable refilling stations that you can either buy or rent. I think, I also did a bit of research in terms of compostable forks and straws and plates and everything like that versus the cost of plastics, and they are pretty comparable. You might get a slightly higher unit cost, but that can be easily compensated for. So I think it's a great idea to kind of direct city staff in that direction to look at all single-use plastics.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Hi. David Eiker, 1110 Loma Court. So this is a good start, it's only a start. I wonder, what have happened to paper cups and paper plates? Because actually, I've got the guide here from Ecology sent to me. What can I compost, including their paper plates without film plastic liners? So the compostables cannot be composted because it takes so long to break down, as it says here in Ecology, as well as the, the presentation given to the S, CSEC. They're just, if they're in, if the compostables are in the compost bin, they just get thrown in the garbage. Here is supposedly compostable plastic that's been in my backyard compost box for three years or more. So luckily, we don't get those anymore. So anyway, the, so I support the ban, I support ban on all used plastics, but especially, you know, the, all the single-use plastics, the bottles. There's also, you can get Water in a Box is the brand name. You can, you don't get the plastic, you get water in a box. And the, as for the water filling stations, you can get chilled water filling stations, if you want chilled water. So the one, I pretty much support everything. Of course, I would like to go more than what you have, but the one issue I have is it does say in here that in the special events, it says use compostable food service ware and include it with food scraps. The compostable food service ware is not compostable. They'll get tossed out as well. So if you're talking about the plastic type of compostables. So I suggest changing that to use fiber food service ware and include it in food scraps, or wood fiber, so you know they're not talking about the plastic style. Also, you know, I got food in these. And usually, you can't tell, is that compostable or not? You know, look, you know, have to read, oh, it's compostable, that's why I threw it in my compost container. So a lot of people wouldn't know, is this compostable or plastic for recycling. I'd also like to see no Mylar helium balloons, because they're the ones that get caught up into the power lines and cause power outages and fires. So I know you have no intention to release the balloons, but I'm not sure why you need Mylar balloons.
Mr. Eiker?
Yep.
I think I have to say thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome. Anybody want to see these?
Does your wife know that you brought that stuff here? I'm just asking. Thank you, Mr. Eiker. Eiker. So at this point, I think I'm looking for direction. I think it says here, pardon? Oh, you still have a question?
So there are, there were a few questions that we wanted to go through.
Thank you.
One, there was a question, and I'm going to ask Lisa, in terms of the for-profit and the funding, if that is, is that for Sonoma nonprofits or any nonprofit?
It states local nonprofits.
Local. And is local defined?
It, I don't believe it's defined, but we've included Sonoma Valley.
Okay. So it's been defined as Sonoma and Sonoma Valley there. The other question was just to, the current staff recommendation, I think, is by March 2019 to look at single-use wine glasses and single-use water bottles. Those were the items I... Go ahead. So clarify that.
Actually, you know what? It's beverage. It, it states beverage below. It just, it should be beverage glasses.
Okay. So, and then the, the compostable food service ware question, fiber versus...
It should have stated fiber.
Okay.
Oh, and to answer Mr. Demmler's, can the, can a nonprofit donate funds to the rehabilitation of city property to be used?
Definitely could, if someone wanted to.
Bring it on!
We'd be happy to write them a tax-deductible receipt if that's something. So...
We'll close it now. Comment, closing for public comments. Thank you. And now we're, we're going on to comments. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Cook.
I guess this is the part of council direction that we're at. I would agree with the, with the plastic glasses, but I think we have to be very careful, because I'm 52 years old, and I remember drinking out a glass, and my mom would take it back to the store where they would give her five cents or whatever it was. And somewhere, everything got messed up. And if you just go attend one waste management, you'll see that just bad policy all over. The last thing I'd want to do is, I don't want to hurt the nonprofits, but most of all, I don't want to hurt Mother Nature. I hate plastic. Anybody who knows me personally knows that I hate it. But I think we have to be very careful here, you know, how we state things. Because I know Go Cups, which is a plastic glass, which I can't stand, but it's not a one-time use. People use them over and over. If you use it in your dishwasher, it's going to look funny-looking, and you're going to throw it away. So there's some things that you have to do to take care of, of that. My biggest concern when it goes to the nonprofits and special events is if we're just doing it for that event, and we don't have a policy for the plaza, we're really going to hurt our nonprofits. And one of the big examples would be very simple. If they can't sell water, or they have water in, in a cardboard, and somebody can go down to 7-Eleven, they'll, they'll be bringing it in for their friends. So what we're trying to do here is we're trying to change behavior. And there's nothing wrong with changing behavior, because our behavior, including myself, so I'm not beating anybody else, I'm beating up all humankind right now when it comes to, to our garbage situation, especially with plastics, is I, I would want this council to make this something that would be for the plaza 365 days out of the year. And then, like one of our speakers was saying, it is the city's responsibility to come up with ideas to try to help, and it's something that, that we can do. Not saying that our event coordinator wants to spend all of her time about bamboo this and, and, you know, cardboard water jugs, but I think it's something that we could build up and, and try to help. Because I would like to change the behavior. I've been trying to change the behavior in my household all my life, because I'm a big recycler. But knowing that I throw it all in the, in the blue can, and it probably gets thrown into the green can when it leaves my property, really upsets me. So I try to look at different things that I can use that will do what I want at the end. It's not somebody else's responsibility, or, or I'm not allowing somebody to make those environmental decisions for me. So when we come to that, I'm hoping that the direction that I would say is I do think that this is something that we need to ban, the plastics, and, and look at it. And I do like the mark, or the, the 2019. I know some people would like it to happen faster, but I think taking the time and doing it correctly and really talking, it's something that probably should come back to the council with some of these ideas that even, that I've heard tonight are good. So the next thing I'd like to talk about is the reoccurring. I do understand that it's hard to go through the process and have the post and, and all that. I do get a little concerned when I see city manager there, and it has nothing to do with the city manager. It just happens to be about control and knowing what's continually going on. Sometimes the council, I feel like you don't know what's going on a lot of times, because unless you go to every meeting, you're really not going to get a lot of information back. So if it did go to the reoccurring, I would like to see an email sent over to the city council members, what was discussed, and that way, we can kind of see if it's something that we would like to, to appeal. The balloons, same thing. I do not like the release of balloons, and I think it's something that if we decide to do it for the special events policy, I think it has to be something that we do 365 times out of the year. Because what happens is, if a private individual wants to go out there and release 100 balloons during the red and white ball, as long as it's not the red and white ball, there would be nothing said. Trying to change, not saying that would happen, but just, we're trying to change the behavior, and that would be something that I, I think would be very important. The last thing I want to mention is something that is not in the report. It's something that I've mentioned numerous times, and I'd really like the council to, to look at it. And it's been brought up, I've been on the council for six years, it's been brought up about the last eight years. And it would be the events that have music where the individuals have to pay to go in to that event during, when the music is being played. We don't have very many events that do that, but I've always felt that it's unfair to the citizens of Sonoma, because I've even read letters to the editor before, or maybe it was emails, that would say things like, well, if you, if you don't like the music, come and join them. Well, if it costs 20 bucks to get into that little roped-off area, you know, it's unfair. And I've seen individuals walk by, and they'll be dancing outside of the roped area, and I'll be dancing inside the roped area, because, you know, I paid a $375 ticket. And I always feel how unfair that is, because we're talking about a taxpayer's property. And I'm not trying to beat up those venues, because I, one of the venues that does it, I, I think is one of the best, you know, best nonprofits that we have here, you know, in Sonoma. But I think it's something that we should look at. And in no way am I saying that if there was a private dinner on the square that you had to pay for that service, that that shouldn't be roped off, because I believe that that should. There has to be a privacy for, for event. I'm just talking about, about music. So that's, would be my two cents on this.
Well, I'm delighted that this is before us now. I think that's great. Thank you, CSEC. Thank you, Lisa. I support the ban on single-use plastics. I don't think that we have the issue of, like, regulating the plaza before us, because we've only agendized the, this policy. So I also think expanding it might be interesting, but I don't think we could talk about it tonight. In terms of solutions, I do, I don't know, maybe like 10 or 11 races a year, and at almost all of them, they serve, they give you either a beer glass or a wine glass at the end, and you can fill that with water or beer or wine, which are always served. So I think that other events are kind of ahead of us in terms of not using plastics, and that is pretty common, at least for like sporting events, it's pretty common. And I, I know the mayor has worked on getting someone to donate and work with us reusable water bottles like this, and I think it's kind of a cultural shift. And now, for example, like for my kids, if a kid brought a plastic water bottle to school, it'd be weird. The kids are like in the habit now of getting their water bottles, like the beginning of the year, you pick out your lunchbox and your water bottle, and you bring your water bottle to school. That's normal. So I think it's kind of like one of those things where we just have to habituate ourselves to, to the new, the new way. So I think that's great. I'd like to see it happen as soon as possible. We're kind of like in on the precipice of event season here, so that's, might not be the right time. But definitely by the next event season, next year, I'd like to see the changes in place. I also support not having single-use forks and knives, and we should be using paper plates. I think that's a good point, that good old paper can be composted.
On the process for recurring events, I don't like the idea that people, I, I think that on that slide, it showed that at the end, there was no appeal to the city council. I don't care for that. I think there probably should be ultimately an appeal to the city council at the end if there's some problem. No? You want to put it up again? Yeah, yeah.
So we're not looking to change the appeal process, Amy?
Oh, okay.
So the appeal process would be the same?
Oh, good. Okay. And then on balloons, I agree, Mylar balloons should be banned completely, and we should not have any release of balloons. And I also think we should not have any straws. I know they said in here that we already had a ban on straws. That's great. And I guess the question of cost, I would be in favor, if there's some like nominal cost, it's like 500 bucks, and there's a nonprofit that already doesn't have a fee waiver, I would be in favor of reducing the cost of renting the plaza for a small amount the first year to help them figure it out.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Hinton, can you explain that a little more? I wasn't quite sure where you said that last word.
So we have some, the heritage events that we've agreed are not going to have a fee charge to them, but if the first year we switch over, there is a nonprofit that puts on an event, and they do pay the fee for renting the plaza, I would support giving them a partial fee waiver to offset the cost of switching over to the new system, at least for the first year, as a gesture of goodwill about the cost.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
All right. So for the applicant permit review, I think, I don't know, and maybe this would be a conversation for the CSEC to have, but as far as the threshold of like what is staying in good standing versus what is losing it, because it sounded like, your explanation showed it was more like egregious things, but I don't know if it's, I think it maybe it should be more sensitive, like maybe there are things that are not egregious that people should still be doing. And if they could just stay, stay in good standing because they keep doing these things, that doesn't really make sense to me. So I just want that line to be actually like spelled out more, so that the discretion is like very focused in making that decision. And so you're saying that in the new process, if it ends up the city manager signs off on it, and someone wants to appeal it to the city council, they still can?
Yes.
Okay. Interesting. All right. Let's see, what else? Inflatables, I don't know, I kind of feel like a curmudgeon, and it's going to squish the grass. I'm, I'm open to trying it out for a year. Concerned about the safety, I'm concerned about the liability of the city if people get injured, but I would hope that the contract and the insurance policies would indemnify the city if someone gets hurt on one of these things. And that it would be really strictly enforced as like supervising, and it's like, you know, always having to have people there, always enforcing. As far as the prohibitions, those all look good. I do agree on the no Mylar, Mylar period, in addition to the prohibitions already stated. For the plastic, single-use plastic, so I, having been a food vendor for five years, San Francisco, most of the large events that I participated in were very strict on what kinds of containers and things you could use. I think they probably have access to commercial composting facilities, which it's slightly tragic that we don't, because it's a very useful material. But if you can't compost it, then you might as well be using plastic. So do we know what the closest facility is that actually can process compostable plastic? Or does Sonoma County have any plans... Or does Sonoma County have any plans to ever have one of these?
I think that's Napa. I think they, I think that we take our garbage to Napa, and they do recycling there. Separation, things that are contaminated, I don't know if they wash those things, that's not what I'm clear about. But that's wonderful that we do have someone who wants to under, you know, wants to be able to share that information with us, and I think we're really fortunate, who said he's going to be watching this this evening, so we're all, we're going to be informing him.
Do you know what the closest commercial composting facility is that can actually compost vegetable plastic?
We discussed in the CSCC meeting, Patrick reported back, I want to say, he said it was north of Ukiah, but I don't want to misquote him.
Because the local one was closed.
Ours was closed. I know there was discussion that we're three-plus years away was his approximation, but I don't have my notes in front of me from that conversation.
We can get that information, send an email to council after the meeting.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's any kind of interim strategy, because when it comes to, I mean, cups, and I get about having beer and paper cups, and if you put the sort of, like, plastic lining in the cup, then it doesn't, I mean, it might as well not be paper. So, it's like, it's really complicated when you're dealing with liquids, and I don't know if maybe there was some kind of way of, like, compiling it all summer, and then joining with other cities to take up a big load to somewhere where they can actually process it, because I think that that, I seem to be a very difficult sort of hurdle for vendors to actually deal with, particularly because beverages, and it's like, well, what else is left to be? I don't know what the containers would be, if you can't have plastic lined paper, and you can't have plastic, which I agree that we need to move away from, I just don't see what the alternative is, except for, I go to this event every summer where we have to bring in and bring out everything that we use for a week, and everybody brings their own cups. And so, I don't know, I mean, it is a culture shift that's a part of this, and I think it's going to be a slow movement of people sort of realizing that this is, it's just all about acknowledging the costs of things. Like, we're so used to things being really cheap, and, like, cheap containers to put things in, but the fact is, it's like, either you pay the cost now, or we pay the cost later, because we're stuck with these, you know, mountains of trash. And so, it's, I see it as shifting the costs to acknowledging, you know, what we're doing now, and figuring out how that is. And I think it's going to be a process, and I guess we have a whole season to think harder about, you know, what exactly, you know, large events, like the Vintage Fest, like, what their alternatives are, and how to make it something that's practical. As far as the infrastructure that would be required, particularly on the water side, because we did get our one water bottle filling fountain, which was a little underwhelming in execution, and so I think that as far as, like, our city as a whole moving towards this, you know, I'd like to see us become less reliant on plastic bottles, and I think it, you know, growing into having the infrastructure available, then having businesses switch over to selling reusable containers versus single-use, and I think it's just something to keep moving forward on. And as far as promotional banners go, I just don't know. I don't know how I feel about them being on the front lawn, as opposed to, like, being on one side or the other of the horseshoe. And I thought that the space available on the wood sign was a nice alternative for people being able to have some advertisement, but, I don't know, that's just me. And as far as, so, yeah, it seems like this summer, and I don't know if it would just be our special events coordinator thinking about this, but as far as sort of planning ahead for next year, and how to help especially our reoccurring events comply with what our policy is going to be, I mean, I think it's going to take some deep thinking, and I think it would be worth sending it back to the CSCC to think about really specifically, you know, what exactly is going to be even doable and practical, and how to connect the pieces, and I think that it is going to be helping, like, if we can do the sort of education part of it, and then sort of letting people know what their alternatives are. And the last thing I'll say is that I was even at one pretty large market where they did have sufficient water refilling infrastructure, where they just prohibited sale of water, plastic water bottles completely. So, in that regard, I don't think it's a behavior change, I think it's, it's on the distribution side. So, it's like, if you're holding a plastic water bottle in the fountain during an event, like, you're not going to get in trouble if you're giving out plastic water bottles, like, that's the thing that we're trying to stop. And it's just like, you know, eventually, that's why people, cities ban, like, stores selling them, it's just you're getting it to the distribution side, you're not, like, criminalizing, like, holding something that's plastic.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards?
So, thinking, hearing all the comments, I think back to the fires, when we had truckloads of bottled water running around everywhere here, and the most important thing I learned during that was, one of the milk companies that I worked with, they were actually packing Tetra Pak water, so they could get it out to the fire lines, and I thought that was pretty interesting, and that Tetra Pak, they use them in vineyards, and what milk comes in, right? And that's, as far as I know, is completely compostable. I don't know how long it takes. The, one of the other things that, in my trade, I go to a conference each year with the executives at Whole Foods and some of the natural food chains, and it'll be in Dallas in a couple of weeks, and I want to do a little research with some of the things that they're doing, and leading edge to the CEO of Patagonia comes to it as well, so it's kind of an interesting group. The, some of the issues around that I've seen out there are beer cups made out of corn. I don't know if that's, if we've done that kind of research, or at least you've had a chance to work on some of that stuff. But I'd be happy to help any way that I could, or I don't, I'm not an expert on it anyway. At home, at Crescent Montessori School, I do the pancake breakfast every year, and I haul out all my glass plates that I keep at my warehouse. We use, you know, real forks and knives, and my kids wrap up the cloth napkins that we buy at the farmer's market over and over and over on the Friday market, and we have a couple hundred at home now. And that's what our kids use. My daughter actually won't go into a restaurant where they have paper napkins, she won't use it, I use my handkerchief, which, that I always have. So, it's something that, as Amy mentioned, it's something that the kids use their, these water bottles, that's just how it is. But every once in a while, you end up with, with plastic bottles, or somebody hands you one, and, but when you look at the cost of transporting, people, we're talking about the recycling and everything else, but it's, we transport water all over the country, and you go in front of CVS, and it's like two bucks for 38 bottles or 40 bottles, and people think they're saving a lot of money when they go to Costco, and they buy all kinds of stuff and bring it back into Sonoma, and it's these giant things of plastic water bottles. So, it's something we try to avoid as much as possible in our home. I'm fully behind doing whatever needs to be done as far as eliminating that. We just, at Rotary, every Fourth of July, we sell hot dogs, and we used to sell water, but we don't do it anymore, and, but the Boy Scouts come over and sell water. So, you know, it's, you don't want to take away from the nonprofits, but we have to do something that makes sense. I've seen at different events I've been to around the country, where they come in with a big trailer that's got water, that you just, you can walk up and take your corn cup or your own container and fill it up, and then that goes away. I don't know who rents those or what have you. Inflatables, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of inflatables. I know if you did the research, jumpy houses and all that kind of stuff, the number of broken necks and paralyzed children because of that sort of thing, I'm just not a big fan of it. We have a lot of damage to our plaza right now. We have, up in the northwest, east corner, we have roots that are this big that are exposed in our ADA area, and that's just not, not cool, as far as I'm concerned. So, before we start adding more stuff that I don't think is that environmentally friendly, and I don't know when those plastic jumpy court, basketball courts and the big dartboard, I don't know how many thousands of years it'll take for that to decompose, but it's something that if we're talking about doing all this stuff, and then we're going to add all this stuff that's never going to go away, it just doesn't make any sense to me. As far as the review, I don't think we need to review over and over and over. I like the escape clause of being able to, if somebody wants to appeal it, they're just going to walk up to the city council person, say, "Hey, I want to appeal this, because I didn't get a good manager from, or a good answer from the city manager or the events coordinator." You know, I'm a big fan of doing something about that, and Kathy knows it, because I've mentioned it the day, first day she was here, the enclosure in the back. I think we need to respect the plaza, it's a historic venue, and I think we need to figure out how to do that. I'm concerned about broken glass on the plaza. If we get a bunch of beer bottles out there, and, you know, and somebody has a little too much, they break, you know, and the kids are playing in the sand, or somebody decides to go out and hang out after dark, and we're, after one of the events, and they're hanging out on the swings, and they break a bottle, and then my kids or somebody else's kids go there and have a nice slice through their foot, because they jump in there barefoot. So, I'm not a big fan of that, but I'd like to investigate more into some of the materials, because I know this is going on in other places in the country. So, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been listening to everyone, you know, it's interesting, actually, I think, I can't remember, somewhere in the Midwest where there were terrible floods, actually, a beer company canned water and sent them out en masse throughout, throughout that area, which I think is a great idea. I don't know how cost-effective it was, but it certainly dealt with the emergency. I don't know how I feel about the banners. I'm not too sure about that, and I, like others, the balloons, especially Mylar, I think I'm really in favor of. It's interesting, you know, with respect to the comments, I like the idea of the larger events that are doing well, and just letting them go through the system, but I, I don't think at that meeting, any, the meeting with their city manager and perhaps you, Lisa, there's any minute, so there wouldn't be a way to be able to share that with council members. So, I could be wrong, but I, I'm in favor, possibly, of subcommittee at that end, you know, to be able to sit with the city manager and you, and they can, you can go over those events, and people could say, hmm, that's, that's not what I heard, or something, so that's something that I would suggest. Other than that, I love the flow chart, again, Lisa, honest to God, I could really get it, but I think you've done a wonderful job, but I think everyone out there knows we still have a lot of work to do on recycling. That's so important, and I think the commitment that this city has actually made with Climate Action 2020 puts us in the forefront, and we really have to be a model for others. So, I, I think that's very important. So, I think, has everyone heard, have you all heard what we? Oh, and, okay.
You reminded me of something. Back to the flow of the permit process, which I do like streamlining it to give the CSCC time to think about some of their other initiatives, but I was wondering if there could be of the events that do not come back to the CSCC, if there could be some sort of quarterly report or something that, just so that there's a record of sort of what's happening there, since nobody's going to see it, and maybe it's presented to the CSCC at some, you know, quarterly interval?
Yeah, I think there's a way to do some kind of report back. The goal in this is not to hide information by any stretch, it's really just to try to be, I think, efficient and effective about where we, as an organization, and I mean that, including the CSCC, are spending our time, because a lot of these things, there's not changes year to year to year, and there's not really much feedback, and yet it takes, you know, at least a chunk of time to put that whole staff report together, all of that, then the volunteers coming. So, trying to find that sweet spot, and it could be, it could be some kind of an annual report, or something like quarterly report or something, so we can play with how to loop that back.
Mr. Edwards?
Just one more thing to add. So, one of the things that I've noticed, and I think my own Rotary Club is guilty of it as well, is when there's a big event, and there's lots of volunteers, there's zero parking on the plaza, because they take up most of the spaces, so the businesses that are there 24/7, 365 days a year, don't have anywhere to park or have their customers park, that aren't maybe attending an event and that sort of thing. So, something I'd like to see special events encourage, and I didn't comment on the signage. I don't like the idea of the signage, but I do like the idea of, with all the things going on in the world and current events, that we create some sort of bollard structure for the driveways that go into the plaza, when you have 2,000 people every Tuesday night there. I'm just, it's just something that I, I think about, and I think it's something that we could, you know, if we had a bollard, some sort of system, I've seen beautiful systems in Europe that are just, like, are really nice, that pop up out of the ground, there's all kinds of other issues, but I think it was something that's important, so we don't have to have news here, and just something I think that, you know, and then if that's where you wanted to have your sign for the day, that might be an interesting thing as well, and that could be on either side, and it could, you know, it could be what the event is, and open to the public, or, I don't know, something that's done with taste. So, thank you.
And I, that I think I could get behind, if it was something that was actually on the horseshoe instead of being on the ground.
Sure.
I also think that's a great idea, Councilmember Edwards' idea, and I agree that I don't like the idea of putting signs in on the lawn, and I didn't say about the jumpy houses, but I don't think they're, I mean, not jumpy houses, but other, other inflatable, non-jumpy house, whatever you want to call them. I don't really think those are necessary, and I don't think I support them.
Mr. Cook?
And I'd also like the idea of Councilmember Edwards on the bollards, and I never talked about the sign, or the inflatables. The inflatables, to me, doesn't matter either way. I know the jumpy houses are illegal because of restrictions on insurance, and as far as the sign, I do like some way of, of letting the locals know what is happening, but that's something that, like Councilmember Edwards said, could be done by the bollards.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank Mr. Adachi for heading us into this direction. I was totally unclear of where I was going, but thank you so much, and Kathy.
So, let me just throw out one question, because, and Councilmember Edwards' idea of kind of something, a bollard or something is going to take more time to kind of put together something that is, one's safe, and, you know, it's frankly, kind of a little bit of a capital project, which we can look at. But even in the interim, one option is, you know, we have the wooden, I'm forgetting the name of it, my apologies, we put out to block the road and block the street.
Barricades?
We use them for, the barricade, thank you. So, the wooden barricade, 10 points to Councilmember Huntley. So, we, the wooden barricades, you could strap a sign kind of to a wooden barricade, again, it's not in the, so, as an interim solution, I'm wondering if, is that something that there's interest or not?
Not for me. It seems like that might look terrible.
Okay.
If it could be done in a way that doesn't look terrible, but I feel like it's going to look terrible.
All right. So, again, that's the aesthetic look we want to maintain of the front of the plaza, that's an important kind of value I'm hearing from the council. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to kind of check that. So, with this one, I want to say thank you to the council for your feedback and information. We'll take this feedback and look and weave this into a final policy to come back to you with a resolution. I also want to thank members of the public and the CSCC for their work on this, and all the special event folks that weighed in, so, thank you.
Thank you so much. At this point, I'd like to go to council, well, dedication can, of course, this evening was dedicated to a former council member and mayor, Ken McTaggart, and I have information for our city clerk to be able to send the letter. Also, are there any reports from council members or comments?
I have a brief comment. I just wanted to say congratulations to the Press Democrat, who it was announced today has won a Pulitzer Prize for their reporting during the fires.
Wow, yay, Press Democrat. And our city manager, and comments or any announcements?
Just a few updates. The city put out its first electronic newsletter about two weeks ago, and if anyone would like to get on our mailing list for that for future, please just email cityhall@sonomacity.org, and we'll get you added, and we'll be putting that out at and we'll get you added, and we'll be putting that out at least every two months, or at least quarterly, and hopefully a little more often. There is our meeting, just, our meeting next week will be on April 23. The focus of that meeting will be a conversation about kind of the October fires, letting council know where we've been, send, send, some after action, and things that are in process, so. And then there is another tasting room, community drop-in meeting tomorrow from 4:30 to 6:30 at the EOC. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Oh, do you want to go ahead and give an update? Let's give you just a brief update about the audiovisual piece here.
So, as you know, we're working on Sonoma Valley, Sonoma Community Communications, sorry, has been working with city staff to redo the audiovisual equipment in this building or in this city council chambers. As of tonight, unfortunately, one of the systems did fail, which it was on its last leg, and it said not tonight. And fortunately, the meeting did not stream on our city site or YouTube. It did stream on SVTV, and it will be posted up tomorrow on our YouTube. That is being replaced tomorrow, so that will be, we believe some of the glitches that have been happening are due to the system failing, so we will be working through it.
So they can go on SVTV to get tonight's meeting?
Yeah, and then we will be taking that, and we'll load it up in our civic web portal as well. So folks can, we'll be able to get to it. So it was recorded, it's not available through the web tonight, but, again, Bob Taylor will be here tomorrow doing his magic to put in some of the new technology.
And he's, he has done some of it. You can see the new monitors are up, and we've restructured the staff's tables, and so, work in progress.
All right. Oh, I'm writing someone to tell them what you can't see. Great pleasure. Before 9 o'clock, we are adjourning.